Good evening, everyone. The June 3, 2024 legislative session of the Anorondle County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. We'll move to the invocation. Ms. Ledbetter?
Wouldn't mind standing. Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith, as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve. Please help us listen intently as we make decisions that impact the people we serve. Help us lead humbly and with a heart of gratitude. Help us to be an instrument of your grace and bless our differences as we lead. Amen. And the pledge. The Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please know individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three pieces of written testimony that was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit, as others are signed up to speak as well. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. At this time, I have one individual signed up ahead of time for invitation to audience, Mr. Kurt Svenson.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Svenson. I live in Arnold, Maryland. Proposed amendments to the county charter, essentially the county's constitution, should be subject to a rigorous review process that includes a review of actual practices and comparative jurisdictions, professional best practice standards, a fair comparison of alternatives, and public input. The synthesized result of this comprehensive review should then be made publicly available to foster a meaningful public debate and discernment process before any such constitutional amendment is approved for purposes of being presented to county voters on an upcoming ballot. Constitutional amendments, which what these are, should not be rushed. They should not be haphazardly thrown together as a hodgepodge of voter initiatives. The sort of rigorous review I just described is not a new idea or a pipe dream. In fact, this is the process that's been undertaken by the Charter Revision Commission when it's been formed every 10 years for the purpose of making a comprehensive study of the county government and the updating of its charter where necessary. This was done just two years ago. None of the four charter amendment resolutions on tonight's agenda were even discussed at the county council work session. Yet these constitutional amendments are scheduled to be approved at the very end of tonight's meeting. So I'll see you later tonight, no matter how late it is, when each of those resolutions to place a constitutional amendment on the upcoming presidential and highly polarized election ballot is scheduled to be heard. As the old saying goes, "About the manipulative nature of human action, never let a good crisis go to waste." Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak regarding, in this specific section, invitation to audience, you may come forward. We have six seats. Let me remind everybody, this is for topics not on the printed agenda. I'm going to start here. Mr. Minahan?
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. We've been, I'm also Chair of the Growth Action Network. We've been in conversation, attempting to be in conversation with you on the topic of charter amendments, and in particular, the charter amendment regarding the 95-day legislative period, particularly for comprehensive zoning. You okay?
I'm fine. Don't lose the minutes.
Particularly for comprehensive zoning. We ran into this six weeks ago, began a conversation amongst some of you informally. We also had a suggestion from one of the council members that the charter amendment include that comprehensive zoning not be done during the budget period. And we think those are both really good ideas. We are concerned that shortened periods reduce the notification time for citizens, and we're hoping that someone on the council will take this up soon in order to get it onto the November ballot, and we offer the services of the Growth Action Network to work with you on that. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Chuck Thompson. I live at 7854 Bakken View Drive in Pasadena, Maryland. Chair Pickard, fellow county council members. I'm here to request you to slow down the growth included in the county executive's FY '25 budget. For multiple years in a row, an increase in income and property tax rates were required to meet the annual budget plan, and FY '25 is no exception. As I have previously communicated, the budget message is about shoring up the county executive's departments and extended COVID area programs under the general fund, and there are no indications these activities are improving the general welfare of county residents. In addition, county residents are struggling with rising prices for food, clothing, housing, interest rates, fuel, energy costs, and so on. There's no end in sight. Increasing their tax burden will only make their financial conditions worse. Someone needs to call a timeout and conduct a series of reviews on the residents' behalf. The demand for services will always exceed supply when prices are free, so reporting transactions is not the answer. It is measuring results. So how has the general welfare of the county residents improved since tax rates began to rise in 2020? Please do not approve an FY '25 budget that requires increase in tax rates and fees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, members of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I'm on Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I'm here to, every two or three years, I come here to address my least favorite topic, and that is roadway and right-of-way vegetation management. We're having explosive growth in our county and all over the place because of perhaps climate change and global warming. And traveling the back roads, I've encountered a number of issues that are dangerous. Power lines covered with vines wrapped all around, so you can't even tell that there are power lines there across the highways. Protruding branches. My truck has already been hit by, on the back roads, by a couple of protruding branches that I didn't see making a turn. Fallen trees. On the way here tonight, albeit on State Route Maryland 450, I saw a downed tree between Staples Corners and the waterworks that had fallen down, and somebody had cut the branches off, but the boles were big enough to indicate that the branches went across the westbound lane. Also, even more dangerous are obstructing, obstruction of official road signs. We can't even see the road sign, speed limit, or other directional information. And the ceiling over the road. I served in Vietnam, and I know triple canopy jungle, and we're now in the double canopy jungle. The ceiling is only maintained, I submit to you, by passing delivery trucks brushing across the branches and trimming them that way. So thank you UPS, FedEx, and Amazon Prime, but I won't believe this anymore until further on in the meeting, when I think I may be able to offer a solution when the topic comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Chris Weinstein. I'm here tonight as President of Anorondle County Animal Care and Control Friends and as a shelter volunteer for more than 10 years. Shelter volunteers remain very concerned about both the unusual circumstances surrounding the abrupt departure of the shelter's very competent long-term administrator, Robin Catlett, and about the future of the shelter itself. Like you, we are alarmed at what may have transpired behind the scenes and about baseless accusations about her. Also like you, we have heard that what happened may have been politically motivated, and indeed there are some who are gleefully thanking the county executive for her departure. We are disgusted by the humiliating treatment of a woman who worked seven days a week for years to improve and save the lives of countless animals in our county while also balancing that with public safety. We were embarrassed by the administration's refusal to allow her to respond to you during your public meetings on Bill 124. In particular, we are deeply offended by the premise that both the county council and those of us who testified about this bill could not think for ourselves, and that we somehow had to be guided behind the scenes to conclusions that, in fact, we all made independently. These conclusions, which led the council unanimously tabling the public safety portions of Bill 124 on March 18, clearly angered some top administration officials. We urge you to continue to pursue the truth about what actually led to Ms. Catlett's departure. We also trust that by speaking out, we are not jeopardizing our own future as shelter volunteers. We know that some consider volunteers quite expendable. As Deputy Police Chief Roberts told you May 23, should some of us leave, quote, "We would just seek out more volunteers." Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, I'm Josh Stivers. I'm also a board member of Friends of Anorondle County Animal Care and Control and a longtime volunteer there as well. Robin Catlett's departure created an instant huge hole in the knowledge and leadership, or knowledge about and leadership of animal care and control. We will provide more details to all of you in a supplemental letter, email. Briefly, these are some of our concerns for this shelter's future direction. According to Deputy Police Chief Roberts' testimony to you during the May 23 budget hearing, animal care and control is being reorganized into three business units: enforcement, operations, and licensing. She said operations and enforcement, what we call care and control, would remain with the police department despite the fact that, as Mr. Pittman said during this budget town hall, that the police do not want to deal with animal care and control. The shelter administrator's job, as it is now being advertised by the county, focuses entirely on animal control and not care. In fact, the word "care" is not even mentioned in the description of the job's duties. The closest it even comes to acknowledging the thousands of pets that the shelter cares for every year is a statement the administrator, quote, "determines the appropriate method of treatment or disposition of live animals and animal carcasses." Taken together, the above makes us wonder if the longer-term plan is to leave the animal enforcement under the police and spin off the shelter to some other county agency, or perhaps make it a nonprofit. That is a model that has not worked well elsewhere and that is studied, was studied in depth and rejected under the administration of County Executive Seashoo. We have also learned several other discouraging proposed changes concerning the shelter, which we will detail in our forthcoming email to all of you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julia Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Some of you who share dreams and nightmares about county council meetings and the bills that we struggle with, and you know, all of the things that go on. And so, to give you an affirmative example, the other night, I woke up in the middle of the night, and I said, "I've got it. I did my homework years ago. I know about the, wow, I know about the charter from 1632 that was signed by King Charles II." And it says, "Everybody gets to have access to navigation and fishing." That means everybody gets access to the water. That means that when you, you know, when you build the hotel on the north side of the South River, all the people on the south side get that other important thing from the other, you know, federal document, you know, the Constitution and the Fifth Amendment, that they get to be, they get to get notice and an opportunity to state their cases and stuff. And so, boy, this is going to be a fun fall-off when these people discover, "Oh, we don't get, we can't use the river because there's so many people there." It's been crowded in the past, I've noticed. I think other people may have too. And so, I want you to prepare for really nice, warm, fuzzy ways to solve these problems. But, you know, but you have a duty to do it because it's in those ancient documents. And if you haven't taken a look at the charter of 1632, it's fun. They didn't print, they didn't type it. So maybe a little challenge to read, you know, some of the words. Oh, and some people think they've spelled the word Potomac wrong. P.O., oh, I can't even do it right. Anyway, but they've got an extra W in there and an extra K. But that will not throw you off because you are dedicated, hard-working, elected officials. And we thank you, and we thank these volunteers who take care of the animals.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This panel is dismissed. At this time, if there's anyone else in the audience that wants to come forward for the invitation to audience portion of our public testimony, which means anything, any topic not on the printed agenda, come forth at this time. This is last call for invitation to audience. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Randy Kendata-Rao, and I'm coming to bring you all's attention about a upcoming event that sparks some great conversation around some of the historical and long-lasting injustices around race and policy in Anorondle County. And that is an event that's being held at Asbury Barneck United Methodist Church, where St. Margaret's Church will give an apology for their role in slavery. And we hope that this can spearhead another further discussion around reparations for descendant African-American communities in places like the Barneck Peninsula, such as Mowbray Hill and Brownswoods and Skidmore and Clay Hill. So just wanted to raise that awareness about that event and put it on you all's radar because it's a discussion that we want to kind of continue to have around equity, as it relates as well to zoning and things like that.
Good evening, town. My name is Norman Watts. I live at 1349 Sherleville Road in Arnold, Maryland. This gentleman right here, I live right up the street in Sherleville. And what they're trying to do in my neighborhood, they're trying to put from Zone 1 to Zone 5. I'm a Marine. I'm a, I'm, you know, the noise bothers me. They want to build and build and build. They want to put five houses on one acre. It should be only one house on one acre. I will agree with one house on one acre.
Sir?
Ma'am?
So this is, you're talking about the Region 4 plan, and that's on the agenda later into this meeting?
Yes, but I gotta leave because I can't stay still too long.
Okay.
That's why I came up here.
Okay.
Because of my condition, I'm a disabled vet. But I can't stand too long, and I can't stay too long, and I can't be around people too long.
Okay.
I'm just letting you know, I'm here to represent Sherleville.
Thank you.
And I will close on that note.
Thank you, sir, very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be back on the 17th.
Madam Chair? Thank you for your service, sir. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May 20, 21, 22, 23, and 29, 2024.
The minutes of May 20, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 6:00 p.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Pastor John Lancome from Onington Baptist Church, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. Minutes of May 21, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held virtually. Minutes of May 22, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 p.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. Minutes of May 23, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held virtually. And minutes for May 29, 2024. The meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 20, 21, 22, 23, and 29, 2024?
So moved. Fiedler.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of May 20, 21, 22, 23, and 29, 2024. Stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 5824, Inordinance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anorondle County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. Bill Number 5924, Inordinance Concerning Purchasing Contracts Availability of Funds. Bill Number 6024, Inordinance Concerning Purchasing Soul Source Procurements, Single Source Procurements, One Bid or Offer.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2424. Resolution Approving Appointment and Reappointment of Members to the Police Accountability Board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 30-24.
Bill Number 3024, Inordinance Concerning Zoning, Planned Unit Developments, Community and Employment.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill. You have the floor.
You said, you said which bill?
30.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was reading something else when... Right, Bill 3024, this is a planned unit development, community, and employment. The purpose of this was, and I've mentioned it at the last meeting, but I'll go ahead and share for the, for those that were not here previously, the intent behind this was to try to remediate and to address an issue that is taking place in District 1. There is a rubble landfill that exists up there near Brooklyn Park in Pumphrey's, which is the community that is adjacent to it. Everyone should know that I've sent this legislation in the beginning to the SEC team that's Region 1 that's up in that area. But for a year, this discussion had been going on with Pumphrey's, the community that is mostly impacted by it, and I wanted to make sure their equities were actually taken into consideration when it came to this. So this bill did not come from a legislator. It was literally driven by what the community wanted. In fact, I think last August, September timeframe, we gave them the sort of impacts and the options and whatever issues that they would be facing, and for them to determine what they wanted. So they all agreed that community association, they drafted up a letter in support of a specific direction, and that's when I took that guidance, worked with the county, and the county also drafted up another bill. This, at the moment, impacts an area of, there's one major project that it impacts. So other districts aren't necessarily, it is a countywide ordinance, but under the conditions that this bill applies, it's once, one, there's a, there's a specific property that we were trying to target. I wanted something to happen to that particular area because it is a rubble landfill, and there have been discussions about water quality, other environmental issues that folks from Pumphrey had conveyed to me over the years. And so for me, I really wanted to do something to address it, and this was a win for, at least in my mind, a happy medium for the county, the constituents, as well as my office. And so, we did work with the county to come up with this language in this bill, and here we are today. There is an amendment that's going to add some definitions, just to sort of spell that out a little bit. I would caution folks, as, you know, when we start getting to land use or land, or bills in general, there is this desire to make it 100% perfect. And we have worked with GAN on this bill. We have worked with Anorondle Community Together, is that right? ACT? Did I say that right? Who actually wrote a letter in support of the bill as well. And I know there's 1,000 different ways to do something, but my goal is for us to do something and to get going, and not spend forever trying to make something perfect when it comes to the legislative piece, because we know what's going to go out there. There is no, that I'm aware of, any significant pushback in the community, because we've worked with them over the last year, and you may even hear testimony from them. But you will have a amendment adding some definitions here later on. But that's what the bill does. It formalizes essentially an agreement that, for a direction that we, the community, wanted to take when it came to that land, and so this allows us to move forward with that particular activity.
Thank you. Would the administration like to add comment to Bill 30-24?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Just want to thank the sponsor for his work on this with both stakeholders and with the administration. We discussed it at the prior council meeting and discussed the two types of PUDs that it creates, the employment PUD and the community PUD, and we'll discuss the amendment at the appropriate time. But for now, just in the interest of brevity, we'll happy to, be happy to entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Are there any questions at this time? Before we, we did leave this public hearing open, so we're going to have the public hearing, and then we'll go to amendments, okay? All right, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 30-24. We did have one individual signed up to speak, Ms. Linda Davis, I believe. And if there's anyone else, this is the time to come up as well. We have six seats. Ms. Davis, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Linda Davis, 215 Coronet Drive, Lenthicum, Maryland. I'm a resident of Lenthicum Heights, which is adjacent to the historic African-American enclave of Pumphrey. When I walk on the hills in my community, I can see the mountain of debris created by the Belgrove Corporation, which goes along the southern border of Pumphrey. If all of the residents in Pumphrey are in agreement with Bill 3024, which it sounds like they are, then I am in support of it. Pumphrey has been subject to environmental injustice from the Belgrove Corporation and the truck traffic that goes along Belgrove Road near Pumphrey's northern border. Residents who live along Belgrove Road have reported cracks in their foundations from the truck traffic. Other residents have reported high, a high incidence of cancer. The residents of Pumphrey do not need any more pollution, truck traffic, or cancer. It is my hope that the Belgrove site will be properly remediated so that the Pumphrey community will finally be able to breathe clean air, have poison-free soil, experience less truck traffic, and live long and health, long and healthy lives. It is also my hope that the county council and the Office of Planning and Zoning will take into account the requests of all of the Pumphrey residents, rather than the requests of the... of the developers and non-impacted communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Matt Minahan, Growth Action Network. This bill is almost a complete rewrite of the code on PUDs, and very happy to work with Mr. Smith and OPZ. Thank you for building in our concerns. Tonight's amendments represent that, and we're very appreciative. We hope that the bill has all of your support. But on the issue of the perfect versus the good, I just want to encourage two more amendments to this that we think will greatly strengthen the bill. One is that these PUDs can be as small as 10 acres. You could have 50 homes in a PUD of 10 acres, and if this happens in C1, there's still zoning for gas stations and auto repair shops and other uses on these small 10-acre PUDs. So we're hoping that an amendment can restrict C1 uses where a community PUD is being built in C1. And our second concern is we would just like to see more active recreation space in the 30% open space requirement. Seems like 75% of the open space for recreation ought to be for playgrounds and jogging and pads around the development. I was just up in Mr. Smith's jurisdiction and saw 100 townhomes with no recreation. So we hope you could figure out two amendments to this bill and happily pass it next week. Thanks very much for all your help on this so far, and we hope it has all of your support.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here because of a related problem that happened a long time ago, but it was so stunning that I feel like it's important to mention, you know, disposal of stuff without adequate supervision and without adequate testing, and that's the Love Canal catastrophe. Love Canal is up near Niagara Falls. They built approximately 100 homes. The children, the infants that were born there just have suffered just dreadful, horrible, almost indescribable birth defects. The families suffered a lot. This was the first big thing that, you know, after the development of the EPA and concern about the environment and how you can get poisoned in your own home because the chemicals can seep through the foundations and the walls and the doors and the windows and outside playing. And so I am glad that you're taking a very serious, you know, look at this. We know that Love Canal was impacted because, hey, you can make money. You get that landfill, you know, rubble dump, shoot, you can make bucks on that one. So go for that one. And so it's, you know, for some people, it takes a lot of other people to restrain them from causing such, such awful harm. And it took a while to figure out that, you know, they lumped benzene and a few other chemicals as being the big bad boys, but in reality, it's like hundreds, actually, it's over, it's over 1,000 different kinds of chemicals of, excuse me, toxic, highly toxic chemicals that have been recovered from the site. And finally, what they had to do is everybody had to move.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 30-24 at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 30-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1. Are we ready for amendments?
I will read the title one more time first.
I'll read the title, and thank you.
Sorry. Bill Number 3024, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Planned Unit Developments, Community and Employment.
I appreciate that, just in case we forgot what we were talking about here. Now, can you read in Amendment Number 1?
Of course. Amendment Number 1. This amendment adds definitions for planned unit development, planned unit development community, and planned unit development employment.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This amendment attempts to, as GAN and Mr. Minahan mentioned earlier, to clarify and just make it clear for users who will read the code, because somebody's going to go back and pull the code manual, and they're going to look, because words have meaning. And so it's incumbent upon us as legislators to make sure that when we pass stuff, that these meanings actually equate to something that people understand. And so I appreciate their efforts to encourage us to define what that is, so that it makes it a little bit easier for citizens to consume it. So that's what this amendment does. Motion to adopt.
Administration like to comment on Amendment Number 1?
Just that we appreciate the sponsor working with OPZ and GAN to come up with these definitions, and we're comfortable with them.
Is there any discussion amongst my colleagues about Amendment Number 1? Ms. Raviyan?
Thank you. I wanted to just note that as I was reviewing the legislation for this evening, I was looking for definitions of the two different types of PUDs, and I emailed our attorney and then immediately found your email saying, oh, okay, here they are. So thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 to Bill 3024 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill 30-24 will come back to be heard again on June 17th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 31-24.
Bill 3124, In Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Reemployment, Reduction of Benefits.
Mr. Smith, this is also your legislation. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill was in reference to a longstanding issue over the last, probably since 2015, when I was first alerted to this, this situation where we're in a crisis where we're trying to hire as many people as we can, and if you are a retiree in the county, and you've retired from Anarundel County, when you come and work for us again, if we have vacancies that you can use your talents for, you're penalized to do that. Essentially, your pension that you receive from the county is reduced $1 for every $2 that you earn while working for the county. I've never thought that that was a, you know, the term to use, but an adequate way to sort of encourage a reemployment of retirees, but I always thought it did the county a disservice. So this bill aims to remove that penalty for folks who have retired, but they realize they do have some gifts and talents, and they want to continue to serve in other capacities. They've been home for a few months, and they realize, you know what, this is not what I, this retirement life is not what I thought it was going to be. Well, the county could use your help, and this is an effort to, for those, for us to seek out to those who have retired and say, look, we don't want to hurt your pension. Overall, I think this bill is probably going to wind up saving money, because if you have a retiree and you bring them back and serve in a different capacity, you're only paying one medical benefits versus two, because you're paying the retiree as they go and work in other jurisdictions, and you bring back the new employee or a different employee, you're going to be paying two individuals' retirement and salary as well as medical benefits and for both of them. So in this instance, we actually get to save money, at least in my mind, and maybe the administration would validate that, but I certainly think it's worth putting out there for us to discuss, and I would encourage my colleagues certainly to support this bill. But I've always thought retirees, specifically in this county, certainly have a lot to offer, and we could use you. You're never too old to come back and help this generation, and so I'm looking forward to reemploying some folks that are in this audience, hopefully in the next few months. So that's it.
The administration like to comment on Bill 31-24?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration, with me at the table are Ann Bedowski, Director of Personnel, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and Stephen Terrell from the Budget Office. I know we'd spoken about this bill at the last council meeting and expressed some things that we thought needed to be addressed. I know there's an amendment forthcoming that will address a lot of those, so we'll withhold our comments until that time, and until then, we're happy to just answer any questions.
Are there any questions of my colleagues regarding Bill 31-24? All right, seeing no questions, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Bill 31-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, we did not.
I do not have anyone signed up in advance, but I see Mr. Shire coming our way. If there's anyone else in the audience who would like to give their two minutes of testimony on Bill 31-24, this is the time to come to the table. Mr. Shire?
I brought my own clock, just in case. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, for introducing this legislation. As we discussed at the prior meeting, this is something that is important to the members of the Fraternal Order of Police, and we appreciate the sponsor working with us to amend the bill. This amendment that is being introduced tonight is beneficial. It makes sure that officers in all the uniformed services cannot reemploy within the same uniformed service as a uniformed officer, which creates esprit de corps and command and control problems, but does allow them to reemploy within the agency as a civilian, which is extraordinarily helpful, because they can come back and bring huge amounts of knowledge, training, and experience back to their profession, but in a non-uniformed role, which, after many years of doing this job, there's a reason why our retirement plan is set up the way it is. It takes a toll on you. But there are many people who want to come back and continue to serve their departments, and this would allow them to do that. We would urge the county council to take up the pension issues and the health care issues that are attended to this, to make sure that the reemployed members can take advantage of a new pension plan, not a old pension plan being recalculated, but a new pension plan, and can get credit for their health care as a combined amount between their two terms of service. We think that that's certainly fair, and we're willing to answer any questions and discuss that as we go forward, and we thank you all.
Thank you. Sir?
Kurt Sivenson, from Arnold, Maryland. I spoke earlier about the need for rigorous review and sharing before introducing charter amendments, and I think that applies to bills like this, notwithstanding the, I understand the difference between good and perfect kind of thing. But this bill was introduced on April 15th. A public hearing was held on May 20th, but the introduction and summary of the bill by the sponsor referenced several substantive changes and amendments that would be forthcoming. Not having seen those amendments before tonight, I'm not able to offer any commentary on the substance of this bill, and I understand there's still yet more amendments that aren't being talked about yet, you know? So it just seems like we got the cart before the horse on this, you know, and the legislative clock is ticking. So I can offer some perspective from outside the bubble of public employee group think. At the meeting two weeks ago, much was made about the fairness of this bill and the punitive nature of the reduction in pension benefit during reemployment. Defined benefit pensions are a sweet deal, folks. By design, they tend to max out at something less than 100% of the highest final pay rate. The fact that many public employees, like yourself, you mentioned your own example, Mr. Smith, have been able to double, and even in some cases, triple dip in different retirement programs, that's frankly an unintended consequence. Only among public employees can the inability to double dip be spun and characterized as punitive.
Thank you, Mr. Sivenson.
That's my context.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. Is there any other one in the audience wishing to testify on Bill 31-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 31-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 31-24.
Bill Number 3124, In Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Reemployment, Reduction of Benefits.
Are there any questions before we go to amendments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment removes references to a retiree who is reemployed earning a second pension and restores and adds provisions related to pension offset for retirees who are reemployed.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. This amendment was done in coordination with, after speaking with police union, fire union, sheriffs, employees, a number of different groups, as well as the administration. This was an attempt to just sort of make sure we tighten up some of the restrictions when it comes to this, or, in some cases, actually put in some things as well, like the 90-day, like we wanted them to be retired for at least 90 days, so that no one could retire on Friday and start back on Monday, and it was sort of some planned process. I can't wait for us to rehire Mr. Sivenson. This guy is an angel, and I'm looking forward to hopefully using his knowledge in the future, hope he unretires and comes back and works for the county. Some of the other provisions in here that we wanted to address was, you know, I know the police union, Mr. Shire had talked about the uniform personnel. So in the military, we call it sort of, it's biased to good order and discipline. It's one of those things where we didn't want to create a situation where you have like a captain that retired and then came back and there was a vacancy as a police officer, and they reemployed as a police officer. Well, for those that are in uniform or in the military, you know, that would be a weird situation to have your previous captain come back as a patrol officer, which probably wouldn't happen anyway. But you got to, you got to design these things for the worst-case scenario, and so we wanted to try to address those situations, and that's why this amendment was put in place. Hopefully, it will receive the necessary votes, but I do think it, the police and other, I guess, groups and the admin can speak to it from their perspective, will support this amendment. So motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the administration like to respond, and then Ms. Hummer has a question, I believe?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do appreciate the sponsor sitting down with us last week, I believe it was Wednesday, for a good amount of time with the Office of Personnel, the Office of Law, and your Legislative Council to walk through some of the issues that are addressed in this amendment, and we're comfortable with it.
Ms. Hummer, did you have a question?
Yes. So in much of the discussion of this bill and this amendment, we've been talking about public safety. I just want to clarify that this bill, in regards to pensions, refers to any employee in the county, not just to public safety employees. Is that correct?
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Can you tell me what this would look like in an example, what the amendment does? So what the bill would look like prior to the amendment, and then what it would look like after the amendment? Because I'm not fully following exactly what this all means.
Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer. I'll try and walk you through an example. The amendment does reestablish some things that are currently in the code, so it puts them back in that the original drafting took out. And so that is when a rehired retiree comes back to us and attempts seasonal position, they are not subject to an offset. So that, there's, what this has is when you will not be offset when you are reemployed. So you will not be offset if you're reemployed in an attempt seasonal position and work less than 1,500 hours. You would not be offset if you came back into a position that was grant-funded, which is actually more than 1,500 hours. And then it has a couple other pieces. The newer language that is included in the amendment allows for an employee who retired, we can use the police department as an example that Lieutenant Shire brought up, retired police officer who then is reemployed, it has a 90-day break in service, reemployed back in the police department as a management aide-to or a program specialist or something like that. It would allow that to happen with no offset. So they would be, collect their monthly retirement benefit and have their salary hole paid for that position.
Mr. Volkey?
And start creating a second pension benefit as a classified employee, or no?
That was removed from this amendment and would be addressed at a future time, as I understand it.
So I'll speak to that. I intentionally wanted to dive into the second pension in a separate bill. This is only focused on removing the penalty for employees who retire and come back. It has zero to do with a second pension. I wanted that to be a more long-term conversation, because I think there's a lot of use cases that could come up that we were not thinking about. that could come up that we were not thinking about, and so I think, I thought we needed more time to talk about what does that second tenure looks like. This doesn't attach or address any of that. This is just the penalty piece. We're removing that from the rehire, rehiring of retirees.
Got it.
Thank you.
Ms. Radbien?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because I have to say I'm a little confused on what exactly this amendment does, such to that I might make a motion to hold the vote on this bill or even the vote on this amendment until our next meeting, because I think we got the most updated version less than an hour before our meeting, and I know that that's how it happens sometimes, but for that reason, I might request a little extra time. Does this allow a former employee, a rehired employee, to collect their pension and a salary at the same time? So it does, so the ordinary practice was, or the previous practice was that for every $2 earned, they'd lose a dollar of their pension, but if they're still employed, and maybe this is, this is where I'm really struggling with the whole concept, is the pension is what you collect when you're not, when you're no longer employed. So you're employed, but you're collecting a pension and a salary?
Yes.
I have to, I have to just ask, why is that not outrageous? Why is, why are we okay with paying a salary and a pension at the same time? That, to me, that just, on its face, seems outrageous.
No, you do it, you do it now. So when there is, if you did 20 years and you retired from the county, you're going to, and you go and work somewhere else, the county is then going to rehire someone else to fill that position you were just sitting in. The county is paying a salary. It's either going to a new person who is off the street from another jurisdiction, or they're paying it to the retiree who's filling that same requirement. You still have the requirement that needs to be filled by someone from the county. The question is, we're not having that person retiring, going back to that same position. We're saying they can go and fill another position within another department so that they can still bring that skill set and that creativity, that knowledge base, back to the county. We will always pay a salary to someone. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's just ordinarily, you would with, you wouldn't pay the pension until the person is fully retired, and if they've come back, I mean, they're, they're sort of unretiring. I think of, you know, someone, again, you know, most of my work experience is in the public school system. If someone had taught for 25 years, and then, I suppose, you could say they retired as a teacher and then came back as an administrator, you wouldn't then pay them the salary as the administrator and their pension as a teacher.
Why?
You just don't. I mean, because they're not retired. What's the purpose of a pension? The pension is the compensation that allows someone to allow...
If, I, I understand, I understand. I think you're, at the end of the day, the county will pay a salary to someone, because the requirement exists for that vacant position that the person retired is filling. So you're not, it's not like you're paying extra money to someone because you brought it back a retiree, but that retiree also earned that benefit. If they chose to retire and, you know, 90 days down the road, we are still needing employees, and they say, hey, you know what? I could contribute to that different organization, because I have some experience, I can probably go help them. Most of the time, we're, it's a disadvantage for them to come back to the workforce, because we're taking away their pension, we're penalizing their pension when we shouldn't. Federal government, not that I even like to use them as a perfect example, military. I've been in the Marine Corps for 26 years. When I retire, I'm going to get a military pension, but I still work for the National Security Agency. So, but they don't, they don't take away my military pension because I come and work for the agency. They don't do that. And so I don't think, I don't think we, as a county, should do that to our employees.
I think what I'm worried about here is that we're actually incentivizing retirement and then returning to the county, because the benefit then is you start collecting your pension early, right? Because you could, if you wanted to continue to work, you could just continue to work and then collect your pension after you retire.
But I disagree. I think when someone is choosing to retire, and they, it isn't, it isn't a decision that they take lightly. They probably put in 20, 30 years. We're just saying if we, the county, find, have a, have an opportunity, and then they, in their life, as they've evolved and realized that they still have some effort to get back, and there is a specific position that they could fill, we don't want to discourage them from coming back, because that retiree is going to go work in Prince George County, they're going to work, go work in Howard County, they're going to go work in Baltimore City, Baltimore County. They're going to go work.
I think that's something we should ask the state to fix. I don't think taxpayers are expecting to pay a salary and a pension at the same time.
We're not paying a net, it isn't, it is, it's neutral. In fact, on the medical side, you're actually saving money, you're not, because you're not paying two medical benefits.
If that person continued to remain with their employment instead of retiring and then coming back, you would absolutely spend less money, because you'd only be paying them the salary. You wouldn't be paying the pension until they actually left the county. So I feel like what we could be doing here is we're actually incentivizing retirement. We're incentivizing retirement and then allowing people to come back and double-dip.
People are coming back in contractual positions, they're coming back in a whole variety of different positions, or they go work in different jurisdictions. I'm saying, why should we not have our county open to those same individuals and bring back that knowledge and skill set that they already have in the county? We benefit from that. The county employees win.
I think we benefit from not having them retire in the first place. I feel like this invites the retirement. I don't know. I wish we could have a little bit more input from taxpayers on this, because I don't think that's what, I don't think that's the intent of what salary and pension are supposed to be. Pension is what you live after you, you know, what you live on after you've worked, and it's less than your full, because presumably, your expenses are a little bit less. But the idea of collecting a salary when you're, or, excuse me, collecting a pension when you're, when you're still working for the exact same organization...
For the county, working for the county.
I guess I've, I've made my point. It sounds like we just disagree here.
Okay.
Ms. Feathler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the bill, is there any time, amount of time that an employee has to be separated before they can return?
At least 90 days. Well, the amendment will specify at least 90 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hammer?
So, the previous discussion, I understand the points that both my colleagues were making. I want to stress something, though, even though this bill applies to everyone, a large part of what we're talking about is public safety, and our public safety people engage in very physically demanding, often dangerous jobs, and they can retire at 20 years because they no longer physically or mentally can handle, for instance, being an EMT or a police officer, but yet they still have great skills that could serve in a different role in the department. And so I think this is tailored for that, for that they can end, they have earned the years that they have for retirement for that kind of job, but they still have skills to come back. Speaking of the school system, I know the school system hires people from other counties that have earned a pension in the other county. They keep their pension, they come to work for the school system here, and so...
I don't think, I don't think they can actually do that anymore, because the state, the school system has a single pension under the state.
So, but it's, but I, you know, I think of, when I spoke to people about this, one a big one that came up was our public safety personnel, who physically and mentally often need to take their retirement from their positions, but we could still really benefit for their expertise in other areas. So I am thinking of that when I think about this, in a way, to retain the knowledge and history of the employees who have served us for so long.
Mr. Volkey?
Ms. Ledbetter was up first.
Oh, my apologies. Ms. Ledbetter?
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Volkey. My, this is a little bit of a comment, and then also actually a question for the chair, but it's okay, it's easy. I think part, in an attempt to bridge the gap between Ms. Radbien and Mr. Smith, I understand where Mr. Smith is coming from, I think, from the military. I mean, this is very common in the military, for someone to retire from 20 years of active duty, to retain their pension, and then to go get a job as a defense contractor, or oftentimes walking right back into the same unit they retired from in a civilian role. They maintain their military pension, and then they're being paid with taxpayer funding. So I think there's a little more, maybe familiarity on Mr. Smith's behalf, but, Madam Chair, my question for you, is it, is it appropriate, I don't know what the rules are specifically, for me, is it possible to ask an audience member for a question that I would, what I'm looking for is a real-life example of how this might work in the county? Because I'm looking at this from my military background, but I would love to see if there's, if I could ask one of the folks who testified for an example of how this might work to help enlighten all of us. Is that allowed with our rules? I don't know.
It's allowed. You're just going to set a precedent of doing it, and then all of a sudden, people are going to want to come up and add to the discussion.
Isn't it all possible that anyone at the table could answer the same question?
Possibly. Yeah.
I mean, I think we've definitely heard examples of, like some of my, our colleagues have mentioned, public safety and retiring from public safety, and then maybe coming back in a retirement, in a, as a pensioner, and getting reemployed, and whether it's the, you know, dispatcher or something that's more sedentary, it's, you know, a different, a different job, even in a different department.
Right.
I mean, I am the child of a retired active-duty military who went back to work for the Department of the Army as a civilian, who carry, who collects two pensions and a social security check, and I hear about it all the time. I will never have the kind of pension that my dad does. So I understand the dilemma here.
Right. I was just, I'm not trying to create a situation, I'm just, I'm trying to help bridge a gap, possibly. So if someone at the table, if that would be more appropriate, if someone at the table could maybe give a little bit more detailed example of exactly how this might work, maybe it would help.
I'll try.
Thank you.
We have, in a current, and this is what the amendment would put back in, as one example, a retired public safety would come back contractually to work as a background investigator, which is a contractual, less than 1,500-hour with no offset. That is an exclusion to the offset. The way the amendment is written, another example would allow for perhaps a personnel analyst in the office personnel to retire and then decide to go work in inspection and permits in the call center, or in the permit center. It would allow them to go into a different department and earn their, and earn their retirement monthly benefit and earn a salary as a permit taker or a call taker in the permit center.
May I ask just to clarify and follow up?
Sure.
Thank you. So it would be someone who served, worked their 20 years for the county, earned that retirement, and then would be going to fill a vacant and needed position in a different department?
Yes, although in the employee's plan, it is 30 years or 60 with 10.
Thank you.
So it is, the rules are a little different for the employee's plan, so they're timed with the...
So 30, 30 years?
They work 30 years and then have a 90-day break in service, and then...
90-day break, okay.
Fill a vacancy in a different department.
That we would be hiring for?
That we would be hiring for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. This feels to me a lot like drop, in the sense that you get a benefit where you're able, it's not exactly, right? I recognize there are some differences, but this concept of you can be actively employed by the county while not making pension contributions because you're receiving your pension payout, it's almost like it's expanding drop to everybody in the county. There's no guaranteed interest rate on your money, right? There's no, you keep your same pay unless you can lateral over to the same pay. Maybe you can, but, you know, so it's a little bit different. I see there are some caveats, but it feels that way to me, which is interesting, because we're always very hesitant about how much we're willing to expand drop, and this is always a bargaining point, and this is something that, like, the unions repeatedly are at the table, sort of trying to get additional time for this for these similar kind of reasons, and now we're expanding it to the entire county across the board, kind of in this bill. I don't know. That's just, it's just an observation I'm noting.
So I do have a question. Mr. Smith, you mentioned that you wanted to take up the potential of earning a second pension in a different bill.
Correct.
So if this amendment were to pass, and then this bill were to pass, reemploying a county pensioner from, you have to decide, we had to decide something. So you would not, without your additional bill, you, we would not be offering a pathway to a second pension?
That is not covered in this bill. This is purely on the penalty piece of it.
Just, it's just about the penalty?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful.
Ms. Radbien?
Thank you. I just want to clarify something. For the drop program, you don't actually collect your pension while you're in the drop program, correct?
You, it is put aside. It is, you do not get it in your pocket. No, it is set aside in an account for you.
So the county is still contributing while you're working, but you're not collecting it?
There's no contributions. You were considered a retiree, but then you, but while you're working in drop, you are an active employee, not paying in to the pension plan.
Okay, and the county doesn't pay in either?
No.
Okay. So that, in that way, this is different than drop.
This is different.
This is, and that, to me, that's very different than drop. I guess I realize that this is something that, you know, does happen in other contexts, but I think that it is something that, I don't know, taxpayers are really uncomfortable with. I, maybe I'm, maybe, maybe folks are okay with this.
I would probably feel, were you, were you right, if I thought that the financial burden was going to be greater, but it's not. You're, the requirement, if you have a...
Absolutely will be greater, because you're not, you ordinarily would not be paying a pension to a person who's employed. So a person who's a pen...
Ms. Radbien, I'm saying, if that, if that retiree goes and works in Prince George County, we are still paying their pension, and then we're going to rehire someone else, it's going to be the same net effect.
That new hire is going to also get a pension in the future, so that is an additional cost. You can't say that they're one-for-one, because that year, that new person is also going to be contributing to a pension, as does the county.
This bill was, this bill doesn't discuss a second pension for that rehire of a retiree.
Well, what you're describing, you're saying that for that, for the new hire, so if we have the situation where the retiree just simply retired and collected their pension, and maybe for them, they go to another county, although I think, like, they've done for the, you know, education, for the State Board of Education, they should probably be doing that across the board in other departments, because I don't think that that's where taxpayers are expecting their money to go, to have people receiving salaries and a pension at the same time.
I think the taxpayer are looking for...
Please, I had almost liked, this is where I will make a motion to hold even the vote on this amendment, because I'd really love to hear more from the community on this.
Can we vote on the amendment? We'll still have two weeks to discuss the bill, because this, the amendment doesn't significantly alter the bill. It's the bill that you have the major issue with, at least, it sounds like.
Having gotten the final copy of the bill only at 6:08 PM, according to my email, I would like a little more time with it. I think that's a fair request.
Well, I believe we're prepared to take an up or down vote on the amendment.
When did we send out the original amendment? Was that two days ago?
This morning.
Was that this morning, that we worked it for? What is, what is your confusion about the amendment?
I would like to make sure that I fully understand it. Right now, I feel like this is, my first reaction to how it's being described to me is that this is something we just don't ordinarily do. You collect a salary when you're working, you collect a pension when you've retired. This is allowing someone to do both from the exact same entity. It's not even like they're going to a different entity, it's the same taxpayers paying both.
Where, they're still going to pay this, okay.
They're, but they're not. It's still different, because if you hire a new person...
Yes.
They're going to, that person is going to also have...
You're going to pay more. You're going to pay more. What's a new person?
Ms. Feathler, I just want to add, the new person, the retiree who comes back is not going back to their previous job that they had the pension with.
Correct.
So the new person coming in is filling an open seat.
Correct.
The retiree wouldn't come back and want their previous position back. The, the retiree wouldn't come back and want their previous position back.
Well, they, they couldn't go back to their
Why would they not, why would they have to retire? They could just apply for that position. You don't have to retire to, you know, say, I, I've been working in, you know, a, a position for a long time. I'd like to do something a little bit easier on my body.
There, there are employees who have been working with the county for 30 years. And if they choose to retire, who are we to say, well, don't retire, just, you know, stay? I'm not saying that they made that conscious decision that they were, they were going to come back. I'm saying, why are we, why are we giving them a barrier to come back once they've already retired?
I feel like we're, we're creating an incentive to retire, especially with only 90-day gap. That's, that's, you know, that's barely long enough to hire someone new anyway.
Okay, let's get back to asking to speak. Ms. Hummer?
I just have one thing, just, I, I know that, we all know this, but I want to just make sure the public knows. We cur, it currently is permissible for someone to retire, for instance, from the police department and then go to work for the sheriff's department and keep their pension from the police department, correct? So we already have that, and that's, that's through the state. Is that, that's allowed?
No, no, that's in county code.
That's in county code, so they can?
They are an exception to when the benefits are not reduced because they're certi, they're certified to carry weapons. So that allowed, that gives them the exception.
That, so they can, they can retire with full pension from the police department and go to work for the sheriff's department and, and earn a full salary as well. Thank you.
I think we should take an up or down vote on this amendment. This bill would then, if this amendment passes, this bill would come back in two weeks and that allows for further discussion. And possibly there's some compromise in that 90-day break that might help bridge the gap. Or we may just not come to a unanimous decision that this is a policy for the county. I mean, that's where we are. Mr. Smith, this is your amendment, so it has been moved and seconded.
What do you want to do, Ms. Radvian?
Wait.
I'm, I'm asking, what do you want to do? I, I want to earn your support. I don't thi, I think this bill is a good thing for the county. I think it's a good thing for those who have chosen to retire. We have vacant positions in our county that we could use a whole, new employees, old employees, retired employees, and, and, and fill all those gaps. We have vacancies across the board. I think this is an incentive that's going to help bring some of those folks back to the table to help our county be the best place for all. And so if it means waiting two weeks to help you understand amendment, I'm willing to do that. That's not an unreasonable ask. So what do you want to do?
My concern is the, how this could incentivize retirement and, and have the county paying a pension for a much longer period of time because the person, instead of retiring and then, you know, staying with their retirement, they, they're coming back, continuing to collect that retirement and the salary, which is just not how things ordinarily work.
We're going to pay a salary to someone who's filling a vacant position. That will always come. The pension they earned, and if they worked 30 years and they choose to retire, and in a year or two years or 90 days, they say, you know what, I want to come back, why are we creating a barrier for them to come back? That's, we're going to pay a salary because the, the position is vacant. And we need to have someone fill it.
I think we're probably not going to come to an agreement on this.
Okay, well, up or down then?
Which would, which would, up or down on this amendment? And then we'll continue this conversation in two weeks, the bill as a whole.
Check.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one to Bill 3124 has been adopted.
Bill 31-24 will come back as amended on June 17th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 49-24.
Bill 4924, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Employee Retirement Savings Plan Contractual School Health Employees.
This is the administration's bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Ann Bedowski, our personnel officer, Tony Geddon, our health officer, Stephen Throw from the budget office, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. I'm going to kick it over to Ms. Bedowski to talk about it.
Ann Bedowski, personnel officer. What this bill allows for is to allow our school health nurses who are currently contractual as part of a recruitment incentive to allow them to have a one-time revocable election to participate in the defined contribution plan, the employee savings plan. At their times, they would contribute 4% of their salary into the retirement savings plan, and the employer would match 8%. There was a summer study conducted over the summer to see how we could work to retain and recruit for school health nurses and there's, and other related jobs. And this was one of the suggestions to do that. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. You're budgeting for the 8% kick-in by the county on the 401A, right?
Stephen Throw from the budget office?
Yes. That's what I thought. So here's my question. I brought this up when this was first proposed because I don't understand why you wouldn't do this. So if the school health nurses decide, I don't want to participate, if, for instance, they're a really short-term employee or they're cash-strapped or whatever, why is there not an option where we say, then we'll give you an extra 8% in your salary because we've already budgeted for it? So if you don't want it to go into the 401A, we'll give you that money because we've already kind of budgeted for that money. That option doesn't exist in this bill as written. I brought this up when it was first raised to me with Mr. Trumbauer, probably two months ago, month and a half ago, something like that. I'm just curious what your position would be on that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure about that just from a budgetary standpoint. I understand because it's a one-time, it could be, it is a voluntary decision for them to do that. They do already have deferred comp, our 457B as an option for them to participate in for, for retirement planning, but that
But that's totally out of their pocket.
Would be a, set up a discrepancy in salaries, I guess, between employees.
Well, it would, but it's also, there's a discrepancy in benefits, right? If one employee says, I want the 401A, and they want to take that, they want the 8% county kick and the 4% they have to put in. But if somebody says, I don't want to lose the 4% on that kick-in, but the county's already budgeted the 8%, that 8% is just falling back to fund balance. Why wouldn't we give that to them as part of what their benefit would be? Okay.
We're opening a lot of can of worms tonight here. That's, that's an interesting, that's an interesting proposal. I don't think I would agree with you, but the benefit is, is there for, for retirement. Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. I really just want to point out what I see is a, a major gender disparity. We're talking about an employee group that has a massive, when we're talking about school health employees, we have massive turnover issues. And we are only just now getting to a point where the school health employees are able to even contribute to a pension. And we just had a conversation about a different field in county government where employees are not only collecting a pension, but are able to retire, collect a pension and a salary at the same time. I really just wanted to point that out and note that for the record. This is a gender gap in our, in our pay structure that we need to continue to work to fix.
Are we prepared to vote on this bill tonight? I don't believe this has gone through the pension oversight.
We can still hold a public hearing and do everything else but hold the vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Both 4924 and 50-24, we are still awaiting, in the 30-day period, for a pension oversight letter, but we will move forward tonight on the public hearing. Are we ready to open the public hearing? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 49-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up to speak on Bill 49-24. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to bring testimony on Bill 49-24? You may come forward at this time. You have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Maureen Carr York. I am actually the Board of Ed member who created the health plan in our schools back in 1991, 92. And I agree with Ms. Radvian. What has gone on over the last 30 years is shameful. When the plan was devised, it was set up that the nurses and the health assistants would be full employees. We got into a little argument about who's employees. So instead of being school system employees, which would have been my preference, they became county employees in the health department. For a while, that was okay. As the program expanded from the very first program that was set up at Northeast High School through the entire system, it got a little expensive, but it's a very important service to be provided to our citizens. Children need it desperately. School secretaries, who used to be responsible for giving medications, believe it or not, needed it desperately. Problem is that during one of the budget cuts, somebody decided to make them contractual employees. These nurses don't want to be contractual employees. They want to be contractual, not at all. They want to be employees. They need the benefits. I remember getting calls from all over this county from nurses saying, what are they doing to us when they took the benefits and the position of employees away? And they were right. They never would have done it to a group of employees who happened to be dominated by men. So this needs to be considered very seriously. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. That was good history. Okay, let's, thank you, everybody. We'll now close the public hearing on Bill 49-24. Madam Secretary, we're going to read the title again.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Bill number 4924, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Employee Retirement Savings Plan Contractual School Health Employees.
And may I have a, oh, you guys want to come back to the table? We need to hold the vote on this bill until June 17th. Does that give us enough time?
Okay.
May I have a motion to hold the vote on Bill 49-24 until our June 17th, 2024 legislative session?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll on the motion to hold Bill 49-24?
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Just want to briefly say, for the record, school nurses, and I've always said this, should be full county employees, period. But aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill 4924 until June 17th has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 50-24.
Bill number 5024, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions Deferred Retirement Option Program Term of Participation Period.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Ann Bedowski, our personnel officer, Stephen Throw from the budget office, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So this bill is about drop. So currently, there are participants in the county's public safety pension plans that are eligible to participate in drop, which is the Deferred Retirement Option Plan. The initial term of that is three years with three additional years that can be added on as an extension, optional extension. On July 1st last year, participants in the Police Service Retirement Plan became eligible for a seventh year of drop. Employees who participate in drop, so we discussed this a little bit earlier, but they are continued, they continue to be employed by the county. An amount equal to their retirement benefit is paid into an account that's assigned to them, maintained by the county, and then interest is credited to that account at a legislated rate. And then at the end of the participation in the program, the participant is required to retire, and they get the funds that are in their drop account. So this bill allows participants in the Fire Service Retirement Plan and Detention Officers' and Deputy Sheriff's Retirement Plan to extend their drop participation for an additional year for a total of seven years, similar to those in the Police Retirement Plan. This was negotiated during the last round of collective bargaining. And it, I'm not sure if Ann wants to add anything else, or if not, we'll just take questions.
No, just happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of my colleagues on Bill 50-24 at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number 50-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I do not believe we have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone here in the audience wanting to speak on Bill 50-24?
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. I realize this bill implements agreements the county's already reached in collective bargaining. There isn't that much you can do, but it definitely is similar, but different, to what we were talking about before. I wish I could have combined my testimony. So I want to call your attention to a few words of caution. In September of 2020, the Government Finance Officers Association issued an advisory pertaining to deferred retirement option plans that states, quote, "Government-defined benefit plans should not include deferred retirement option programs for a variety of reasons." The top concern is that the cost impact of a drop is difficult to assess and requires assumptions that cannot be tested by experience. The assumptions are what you all have been throwing away back and forth at one another. It's not, you don't need it to be explained to you. Your assumptions are different than your assumptions. No one assumption is right or wrong. They're just different. Actuarial minds disagree about this stuff, okay? It isn't just you politicians. So this is the grain of salt that should be taken along with county actuarial studies that suggest an added year of drop, quote, "would not have a significant impact on the plan's overall funding for the current 24 employer costs." I don't need to remind you that the overall police retirement plan is huge and that incremental costs, by definition, are going to be insignificant. Furthermore, while everything is not a zero-sum game, when it comes to financial programs like this, there's no such thing as a free lunch.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Thank, thank you. Thank you, sir. After this meeting, it will be, yes. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on Bill 50-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 50-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 50-24.
Bill 5024, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions Deferred Retirement Option Program Term of Participation Period.
Is there any further discussion of my colleagues? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. This is a comment. Mr. Svensson, I just want to thank you for those remarks. I agree, there are a lot of assumptions we make. It's kind of like when we did the police officers' tax credit, right? We're making an assumption that's not going to break the budget, but it certainly had an impact, multimillion-dollar impact, I might add, on the budget because there's a cost to that. I think the challenge comes down to, for all of us, whether we know exactly what the amount is or not. What we do know is that we do have a shortage of police officers in this county. We do have a shortage nationwide. It's hard to get people who want to be police officers or firefighters or detention officers. And so at some point, you are correct that we are sort of taking a leap of faith, but we do have to take that leap of faith because we need these positions to be filled, and we have to do things that hopefully incentivize folks to want to do the job. So at a certain level, we are taking a leap of faith but making a policy decision that this is an important policy that we want to pursue to try to get these positions filled because I do believe that for my because I do believe that for my constituents, the people I represent, they want these positions filled. So I don’t say any of that to denigrate or take away from your remarks, because I think they’re very valid and helpful remarks, but I just want to share that, that they’ve not gone on deaf ears, but we’re certainly having to look at this from multiple perspectives, and that’s one perspective, but it’s not the only perspective. Thank you.
May I have a motion to hold Bill 50-24, hold the vote on Bill 50-24 until the meeting of June 17th, 2024?
Ledbetter, so moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold Bill 50-24 until the June 17th, 2024 legislative session.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill 50-24 until June 17th, 2024 has passed.
Thank you. We will take that bill up again on June 17th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 51-24.
Bill 51-24, an ordinance concerning personnel classification and pay plans, classified service and exempt service, public ethics, financial disclosure.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Ann Badozky from the Personnel Office, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. The purpose of this legislation is to enact the Personnel Officer’s Class and Pay Plan for County Classified and Exempt Position classifications, which is consistent with the FY 2025 proposed budget that is also before you right now. And I will turn it over to Ms. Badozky if she has anything else she would like to add. I know we do have some amendments that we’ll discuss at the appropriate time.
No comments at this time. I’ll be happy to take questions.
Are there any questions from my colleagues regarding Bill 51-24? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have this question. I can’t remember if I’ve asked it in years prior, but how do we pass this bill when we haven’t passed the budget yet? Like, there are amendments, so that’s obviously going to kick this out. I get that. I fully track that. But say we didn’t have amendments. How would we pass this bill tonight? Would we have to hold it?
I think you have asked that question before, and I don’t recall what we did last year, to be honest. We may have held it over, but they do get submitted right after the other one, the budget, to reflect what’s in the budget.
It felt like déjà vu to me, too, so...
Any other questions of my colleagues at this time? We’ll now open the public hearing on Bill 51-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don’t believe I have anyone signed up in advance to speak on Bill 51-24. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time on Bill 51-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 51-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 51-24.
Bill number 51-24, an ordinance concerning personnel classification and pay plans, classified service and exempt service, public ethics, financial disclosure.
And there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment corrects the omission of Emergency Management Director and Transit Officer from the list of individuals required to file financial disclosure statements.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That’s exactly what it does. It adds the Emergency Management Director and Transit Officer to the list of folks who are required to file a financial disclosure by sometime in April. I forget the exact date, but I did it, so...
There a motion to adopt Amendment Number One?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill number 51-24, as amended, will return.
We have a few more amendments, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two to Bill 51-24. I didn’t realize that.
Amendment Number Two. This technical amendment corrects a typographical error related to Public Safety Analyst III and the Personnel Officer’s Classification Plan for the Classified Service.
This is an administration amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It’s a technical amendment correcting the typo. It’s in the exhibit, and it’s attached to the amendment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number Two?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment corrects the pay scale in the Classified Service for Police Captains.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this amendment substitutes out Exhibit B and replaces it with Exhibit B1, which does correct the pay scale for police captains. I’m not sure if Ms. Badozky wants to add anything to that.
No, it just does replace it to reflect some of the allowances that were previously granted to captains.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number Three?
Somebody?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three to Bill 51-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment corrects references to the Director of Equity and Human Relations.
Mr. Hunt, this is a county executive amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This just corrects a job title.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number Four?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
I have a question.
You have a question?
This is why I’m one.
Okay. Mr. Volkey, what is your question about the...
Thank you. If we don’t pass this amendment, does this title go away?
It will not go away. It will just remain as what it is.
Okay.
Wow.
Just checking.
Cheeky tonight, Mr. Volkey. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been adopted.
Double check. That’s the last amendment for Bill 51-24? Okay. Bill 51-24 will come back as amended on June 17th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 52-24.
Bill 52-24, an ordinance concerning budget and finance, grant special revenue fund, conditional appropriation of grants.
This is a county executive bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office, Kevin McMahon from the Office of Finance, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Tony Geden, I believe, is still in the audience as well, who may be able to answer any questions about the practical implications of this bill, if anyone has them. Just very briefly, so this bill provides a more streamlined process for appropriated grants that are not included as part of the annual budget ordinance. You’ll remember, part of the county executives’ initiatives for the second term were finding ways to streamline and improve government processes to make them more efficient, so this falls under that. Bill 54-24 requires this process to apply when few conditions are met. First, that a grant award confirms that the funds are actually available. Two, that there are sufficient funds available for any required county match. And three, the county council is presented with a resolution and opts not to take action to hold a public hearing. So the goal of this bill is to get grant funding to departments faster, and we do believe that the county council, by having the ability to hold a public hearing, are still retaining power as the final fiscal authority. I know there’s an amendment addressing the public hearing component as well that we’ll discuss later, but for now, I want to turn it over to Stephen and Kevin to make some additional comments.
Madam Chair, members of the council, Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office. I’d just like to take this little bit of time to explain kind of how grants get into the budget now. So grants can either go into the budget through the approval of the budget process, so the budget process that’s before you all right now, there’s a listing of grants. You can ask questions about all of those grants as part of the budget review. Or if a grant is not included in the budget, we bring legislation down to you. That’s the current practice right now. These could be for grants that have a county match, or do not have a county match, a hard match, or a soft match. Since fiscal year 2021, there’s been 65 new grants brought before this council through the legislative process. Four of them have had a cash match, none since 2021. Therefore, these are all outside funds that are coming into the county to do whatever the grant’s purpose might be. The last bill was 24-24 that this council passed, I believe, at the last meeting. There were two grants in there for the partnership. A review of our internal process, we got notification of that award on March 12th. It was passed 69 days later, meaning for almost four, three months, that those funds were not in the hands of the partnership to dish out to their nonprofit organizations. They were waiting on those funds. As noted, the vast majority of these grants before the council, four out of the last 65 have had no cash match. There’s been no county dollars instituted in those. This bill attempts, as Ethan had mentioned, to streamline that process to get the grant funds out, especially ones that don’t have a county cash match into the hands of the grantors, while still allowing legislative branch to be the final fiscal authority. And now I’ll turn it over to Kevin to talk a little bit about the process that goes on internally to review those grants.
Thank you, Stephen. Madam Chair, members of the county council, my name is Kevin McMahon. I’m in the Finance Office and oversee the grants program for the county. The current purchase order process for approving grants, basically, there’s three key steps. The first one is we need to confirm the award from the agency, and the terms, conditions, the amounts, so forth. Then the second item is we need to confirm that there’s enough in the award to date to fund or approve the spend on the purchase order. And then the third item is to confirm that there are sufficient current-year appropriations in that budget to be able to approve that order. If all three of these are confirmed, the PO can be approved and moved on in the approval process. With grant approvals, there’s basically four departments that have to do the approval. It originates with the issuing department, then it comes to my group in the grants. We do the, we confirm and check to make sure that the award’s there, we have available funds and appropriations. Once we, those three criterias are met, it gets moved on to the Budget Office for their approval, and then finally, it goes to the Finance Accounting Control for the final approval. Once all that is done, the purchase order goes back to purchasing, and then it can be signed and become an actual purchase order. Basically, if every, if all three criterias are met, it can be approved in one to three days. If, usually the appropriation taking the longest, that could take upwards, as Stephen pointed on, months. Our history is about two, about, you know, two months, two and a half months to do that. If there’s problems or differences with appropriations not being sufficient, the Office of Finance just does an internal fund certification, which the controller signs off on, and we send that up to the Budget Office to get the appropriation increased to not exceed the award amount of the grant award. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about Bill 52-24 at this time? Mr. Volkey.
Just so that this panel isn’t here for nothing, I want to add a couple things. I want to thank Mr. Thoreau from the Budget Office. He and I had a good conversation about this earlier. I know that there is, I think, an amendment coming for this that we’ll have to deal with, but I just, I think in the end, there may be some sort of philosophical differences about how this should work. I certainly appreciate the county executive’s goal to try to streamline government and create efficiency. I think that’s a laudable goal, right? And that has been something that you all have brought some other bills down that we’ve been supportive on. I think the concern for me, and I don’t know for my other colleagues how much this is a concern, but obviously, there’s a degree of oversight that comes with the delay, because it ensures that it does come in front of us as the council. It ensures that the auditor does have a chance to take a look at it. It ensures that there are some levels of sort of oversight on the grant funding that, while they certainly could still exist in the framework that’s been created, one of the points that I actually saw after we had spoken was the point that the auditor made, that there not, would not necessarily be oversight from the auditor’s office on the grant if it doesn’t actually come to us as a piece of legislation. So maybe that’s something we need to think about to try to figure out if there’s a way to deal with that in this. But I just, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for the work you’ve put in on this, you know, and I don’t want it to seem like we’re at loggerheads. It’s not like we are looking to create inefficiency in government, but sometimes balance of powers is inefficient by design. So I think we all understand that. Everybody sort of sees where the others are standing. Thanks.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also appreciate the end goal here. I think efficiencies are important, but knowing that the oversight in the bill is basically the ARPA format, the way that if there are three council members that have concerns, we can have a public hearing, that was my amendment on that legislation back during COVID, and it was a very contentious discussion about if there should be three members or four members who trigger the public hearing. We did land on three, but there is nothing that prevents future councils, or even this council in the future, from changing it to four, and then we would have grants sitting in drawers when maybe three members want to bring it to a public hearing. So for that reason, I think it’s important to have that oversight, but I do appreciate, I mean, I know it’s been a challenge. I’m just not going to get here tonight.
So when, I have a question about grant awards. I do have a little bit of background in nonprofit work, but when all those things that y’all mentioned in the purchase order process, and the two and a half months, or two months, and then another 69 days, are we seeing the grant funder, are we seeing them ready to send Anarundel County a check as soon as we get that grant award? There seems to be other procedures that happen.
To my understanding, there is a billing process that needs to be submitted to get those funds. Some funds we certainly may get upfront, but I do believe a lot of them are kind of reimbursed based on expenditures.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any other questions before we open the public hearing on Bill 52-24? We’ll now open the public hearing on Bill 52-24. I don’t believe we have anyone. Do we have someone signed up? You what?
I just wanted to mention about written testimony. We had one piece of written testimony that has been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website, but we do not have anybody signed up to speak ahead of time.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to speak on Bill 52-24? I see Mr. Svensson coming forward, which means the panel will have to part. Is there anyone else at this time? We’ve got six seats. Let’s, we can knock it out. Mr. Svensson, you have two minutes.
Arnold Maryland, I just wanted to say, because I was involved in this discussion back during COVID that Ms. Fiedler mentioned, I actually worked in the Budget Office and was the driving force in getting this section of code incorporated into the county code, and I was really ticked off that it was being misused, or not as transparent as it really should have been.[1729.21] should have been. And I love the fact that we got to where we were, and I just want to say that I totally support this bill, that the idea of, we always said, just make estimates, man, to get the estimate in there, you know, even if it's not realistic, just get the estimate in there. But this is much cleaner. You don't have to make up numbers to get it in there. Two caveats, though. I'm looking out for the citizen here. You all get these resolutions, and you all can make the decision, three or no, but what about the public? To me, Section C 3, the county council is presented with a resolution to approve the appropriation of the grant. In my view, that's public information. I ought to be able to see that. I'll be submitting PIA requests to get it, but I suggest proactive disclosure. Put it up online, man. It's not that big a deal. Let people see what we're getting from, in grants, and what's being conditionally appropriated. The citizens have a right to know. Second caveat is this, this new section, given the new section, please, I'm pleading with the administration to stop and actually suggesting to you all to cut $1,000 placeholder grant amounts. You don't need to do that anymore if you pass this bill, because if it's not in there, there's a process that, you know, so you don't need to do those phony baloney $1,000, but if you do that, it can fall through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill 52-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 52-24.
Bill Number 5224, Inordnance Concerning Budget and Finance Grants Special Revenue Fund Conditional Appropriation of Grants.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment provides for five days for the council to consider hearing a resolution to approve the appropriation of certain grants.
This is actually my amendment, and in looking at the, the way the bill is drafted, I just felt this council could use more time to review the resolution, and then if there's a will to, or an interest in scheduling a public hearing, making it so that it would be scheduled at a regular legislative session. This is a part-time council. I think that those extra days to, in review, but also making sure the, the, if we brought a resolution and wanted a public hearing, it would be done at a regular council meeting and not having to come together in a separate meeting. Happy to discuss it further. Motion to adopt. The administration have anything to say?
Just that we're supportive of this. We think it's a good amendment, so urge the council to adopt it.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number One? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
I can get there tonight on this. Aye.
Okay. Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One to Bill 5224 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill 52-24 as amended will come back to be heard on June 17, 2024. All right, where are we now? All right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 27-24 as amended and Bill 28-24 as amended.
Bill Number 2724, Inordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Four Plan. Bill Number 2824, Inordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Four.
Region Four, this is an administration initiative. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pompas, Cindy Carrier, and Eric Ketterling from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So I know we discussed these two bills extensively at the last council meeting, had a little bit of testimony on some amendments. We're happy to jump right into the amendments for tonight, answer any questions if anyone has them. If not, we can just jump to the public hearing.
Do we have any questions or comments about Region Four? We typically do the public hearing before amendments, so we'll now open the public hearing on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24. This is a joint public hearing as these two bills go hand in hand to create the Region Four Plan. Madam Secretary, did we have any written testimony from the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had four pieces for Bill 2724 and 33 pieces for Bill 2824. They've been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website.
Okay. I know, I know we have people signed up. I had to, my computer screen was frozen for a minute. So I'm going to call both of them at the same time. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna call people up in, in groups of six. There are six seats. I have Jennifer Jackson, Kim Greco, Andrew Price, Leslie Price, Frank Langfitt, and Julia Langfitt. That's our first six that I have signed up here tonight.
Madam Chair, can my wife call before me?
Are you Mr. Price or Mr. Langfitt?
She can, yes, but I'm going to start with Jennifer Jackson. I understand that.
Okay.
My name is Jennifer Jackson, and I live on Holly Avenue in Pasadena. I'm here again asking that you not approve the rezoning of Ritchie Highway between lots 91 to 115. These are currently single-family home lots. One has a business, and the plans call for rezoning for middle-density townhomes, to be put here. Traffic in this area is already a nightmare, as it is a choke point before the entrance to 100. There is nothing in the plans addressing infrastructure issues that currently exist in this area, nor anything to plan and solve for the needs of development we cause here. I heard you, Ms. Radvian, at the last meeting, say that we desperately need this housing to alleviate traffic from people coming from out of the county to work, as well as for housing to be available to all incomes, and I fully agree. However, these plans do not solve for that. Nowhere in these plans do I see stipulations that these homes will be in a certain price range, income base, or owner limitations. We have far too many companies, vacation rentals, flippers, and other types buying properties and taking them off the market from the very people you are trying to find housing for. Just up the street from these lots, so-called middle housing is being put on the lots that are similar to what 91 to 115 are. These townhomes are also zoned for PES in Chesapeake, and they will start at $800,000. I would hardly call that affordable housing within the reach of our school staff and first responders with what you are paying them. I see no creative solutions, such as to incentivize employers who can offer work from home for those who can. You have a Fortune 50 company in this county that just recalled their staff to the office eight times or more per month, as opposed to two days a month. This alone puts over 200 cars more on the road, starting later this month, per week, and there are plenty of other creative solutions, but we keep doing the same things and expecting a different outcome. These homes would send more kids to a now-full Pasadena Elementary and more traffic down the peninsula as they are zoned for Chesapeake. I do not understand why redistricting was done prior to these plans being finalized and why potential builds were not factored in. Pasadena is getting 125 new families next year. We will not be able to support new students from these potential new developments. What are the plans to address these issues?
Thank you. Kim Greco?
Kim Greco, I live on Shot Town Road in Annapolis, Maryland. Good evening. I oppose the zoning changes on Shot Town and Shirleyville Road, and I urge you to keep the RLD zoning unchanged. If not, there could be an increase in residential density of over 200%. Shot Town Road does not have public sewer access right now, but it is wrongly, wrongly listed in the zoning changes as if it does. This mistake is critical because it's used to justify more houses in the area. The changes amount to spot zoning, benefiting a few property owners at the expense of the broader community. This practice is not only inconsistent with comprehensive zoning plans, but also illegal. Anarondle County versus Harwood Civic Association highlights the unlawfulness of spot zoning and its detrimental effects on community values and property rights. The SAC reviewed only one of six zoning applications for Shot Town Road. They recommended it remain RLD. The proposed zoning changes are inconsistent with the goals outlined in Plan 2040, particularly Goal BE4. One PAB member mentioned by name in my email to you has personal ties to the properties along Shot Town Road and has potential financial incentives if the zoning changes are approved. She publicly advocated for property owners on Shot Town to have unrestricted use of their land. However, her same arguments were not used to advocate for other landowners nearby. This raises serious ethical questions about the integrity of the decision-making process. I implore you to keep Shot Town Road zoned RLD. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leslie Price?
Hello, my name is Leslie Price. I live at 2112 Bayfront Terrace. I'm here to ask council to oppose rezoning 2116 Bayfront Terrace from an MA3 yacht club to an MA2 light commercial marina. This yacht club was created in the 1960s, at the same time the whole area was being developed by one person, and was an incentive for people to buy real estate and put up houses there. It worked, they did, and some of the original owners were actually required to become members of the yacht club. Along the way, it ceased to be an MA1 and became an MA3, and has continued for, what, 50 years now or more as a community amenity. Two-plus years ago, it was bought by Safe Harbor, and in that time, they have increased the usage, and I'm quite confused, because the Office for Planning and Zoning said that the reason they were recommending that it become MA2 was so that it would comply with existing uses. But the existing uses that are there now are not legal under MA3. They have a fleet of charter fishing boats, they have a freedom boat club, and what's worse, from our perspective as a community, is all of these are requiring fueling. The fueling is being done by trucks coming in and providing fuel without the safety requirements that one would hope would happen on a creek that is adjacent to Sandy Point State Park.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Price?
I'm Andrew Price. I have the great advantage of living with Leslie Price, and I'm very, very proud of that. Leslie's talking about the facts. I want to talk a little, little bit about the law. When the county passed its general development plan, it recognized a significant difference between a marina in a residential community and zoning issues between neighbors. They recognized that, they put limits on what you all can do in terms of rezoning a marina. They specifically tell you what criteria is supposed to be used. They tell council, quote, "You need to analyze small-scale nonprofit, nonconforming, nonconforming marinas in residential areas to determine whether the new zoning district and requirements should be established that are more compatible with the surrounding community." Not compatible, but more compatible. That is the only criteria you were to look at as to whether or not 2116 should be given an MA2 rating. Leslie's talked about the nonconformity. We had the advantage, we, Councilwoman Fiedler, accepted our invitation to come and, and take a tour of our community and to go into the marina, something that the Office of Planning and Zoning never did. They never went there, they never saw it. They used video pictures, satellite pictures. They, they must have spoken, in fact, when I spoke to them, they acknowledged they spoke to Safe Harbor but never talked to us. Safe Harbor said, well, we need to have this because we're, we're doing things like charter fishing boats, fleet renting boats, bringing in gas, all of which are not permissible, permissible under MA3. So they changed their, they changed their ruling, they supported the SAC saying it should stay as an MA3, and all of a sudden, it stopped.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to stop right now, but I just wanted to say that Johnny Cochran said that if, if, if the glove didn't fit, you can't convict.
Thank you, sir.
And my last meeting, last thing to you is, if, 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 if
We're going to move on.
If the new zoning regulations don't fit.
Thank you, sir.
You can't do that.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to Mr. Frank Langfitt.
Thank you for having us here today. I live at 2114 Bayfront Terrace, so I live right next to this property with Safe Harbor. And from my perspective, this is really about the rule of law. If you support the zoning change, in a way, it will reward this company for already violating zoning regulations. And I wonder what kind of message that that sends. The other thing is that we are your voters and your constituents, and we think this will change our community, and we hope that you will represent us and not side with a multi-billion dollar company in Dallas, Texas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Julia Langfitt?
Hi, my name is Julia Langfitt, and I live at 2114 Bayfront Terrace with Frank. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for your thoughtful work on this issue, and thank you to Ms. Fiedler for coming to visit and see our concerns firsthand. Our home is adjacent to the large gate that allows the public into the private marina next door. I am not here today to tell you that I moved next to a marina, only to complain about the marina noise. I am, however, here to oppose the rezoning of Safe Harbor at Predigory Point from an MA3 to an MA2. As Robert Frost once said, "Good fences make good neighbors." I have always believed in the importance of boundaries and respecting the space of those around us. Living next to a marina that I love has brought me great joy and peace, but now it seems that the marina has plans to expand and become profitable, profit at the expense of the environment and the residential community. While I understand the desire for growth and success, I can't help but feel a sense of unease about the changes that come with it. I fear that the peaceful coexistence we have enjoyed may be disruptive, and the very qualities that drew me there in the first place will be lost forever. I believe it is important for us to maintain a balance between progress and preservation, to respect the boundaries that we have set, and to honor the MA3 zoning. When Councilwoman Amanda Fiedler came out to visit the marina and see our concerns firsthand, she described our case as compelling. If, I hope that means you will represent and support us. Please amend this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'm going to pause and just remind folks in the audience that we do not allow food and beverage in the chamber. So if you need a break of some kind, you can have your refreshment in the lobby. At this time, I'm going to call up Richard Brill, Lisa Russell, Rosario Iscuerto. I skipped who? Oh, Arlene Kritzos. John Coca, Debbie Ladato. Is that six? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right. Someone I call not, so we have two more chairs, so we can bring up Kurt Svenson and Carl Jackson at this time. Somebody's not here. And we'll start at this time with Ms. Arlene Kritzos. State your name and address for the record. Oh, she not here? Oh, never mind. Richard Brill.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Richard Brill, and I'm a 40-year resident of Predigory Point, and I live at 2105 Bayfront Terrace. The first thing I want to do is give out a real shout and thank you to Councilman Fiedler for coming out and spending some time with us, learning about our community, touring the marina, so forth. I thought that was very nice of her, she did it on her own time, and just really appreciate that. The second thing, I think that Andy already touched, and I think it's one of the most important things here, is that the county's planning 2024 plan, the direction was to find places, which Andy submitted, that were more compatible with the surrounding. Well, in this case, Safe Harbor's marina is, is far from that. They're directly opposite what the community represents. So the answer to changing to an MA2 zoning would not be more compatible with our community. The community is the same. It's been the same for 60 years. It's a one-way, one-out, one-way, one-out community. There's no sidewalks, there's no streetlights on Bayfront Terrace. It's, it's been the same for 60 years. So I feel sorry a little bit for Safe Harbor's marina. I don't know that they did their research when they purchased this property, but it is what it is, and, you know, it's got to look at the facts. It's, it's a very small community, and it's, it's not compatible with the M2 zoning. All previous zoning requests, the other thing I'd like to emphasize is all previous zoning requests for the past 50 years, the council has seen fit to deny those requests.
requests for the past fifty years, the council has seen fit to deny those requests and keep the MA three zoning, and that's what we're asking for here. Even the SAC and the Planning, Your Own Planning Commission, as recent as October, recommended not approving the zoning change. So kind of, there's a disconnect here which we're having a hard time understanding. So, okay. One other thing, I just wanted to point out that the Broadneck Council of Communities has agreed with our position on this.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Russell?
Hi. I'm Lisa Russell, and I've lived on the Chesapeake Bay and Pettigree Point community at 2122 Bayfront Terrace in Annapolis for thirty-one years, and I, too, oppose Bill 2824. Pettigree Point was developed in the sixties as a residential area with a yacht club, which was allowed via special exception to the existing zoning. In 1973, the owner requested a rezoning from MA three to MA two, which was unanimously denied by the county council after hours of testimony from concerned residents. In 1979, '80, the owner again applied for MA two zoning, which was denied by both the county zoning officer and the zoning board of appeals. Once again, the owner is trying to expand, which was what was originally granted only by special exception, significantly altering the nature of this active, vibrant, and very residential community of single-family homes with no sidewalks, speed controls, streetlights, or fire hydrants. We are also all on septic and well, including the marina. This time, the owner is Safe Harbor Marina, a $2 billion national corporation and the largest owner and operator of marinas in the United States. I make that point because this is not a local company, which needs support from Anarundale County Government, quite the opposite. It is a community which needs your protection. I have observed Safe Harbor engaging in these unpermitted activities, allowing operation of fishing charters, providing fuel, and allowing them to clean fish, entering into a relationship with Freedom Boat Club, which is renting boats and providing fuel, removal of live trees and shrubs, including in the critical areas, which has eliminated a noise and sight buffer area between the marina, the neighborhood street, and adjacent residential properties. Safe Harbor has been engaging in unpermitted activities since their purchase, and the zoning designation has been clear. There has been no demonstrated justification for zoning change by Safe Harbor or by the county Office of Planning and Zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Rosario Isquero?
Isquero.
Is, oh.
Did you have high school Spanish?
I did. I did. I did, but I'm many years from that. A lot of vowels. Well, it's a beautiful name. You have two minutes.
Yes. My husband, John Coca, is sitting over there, and he's going to tell you what I'm going to tell you, so.
Okay.
Go ahead. Last week, I was falling all over myself trying to testify against upzoning this marina across the street from our house. We've lived there thirty-three years and love it there. But after I testified, I wondered if you were boaters, any of you, or all of you? And if not, then I want to make sure that you understand about gasoline vapors. They are heavier than air. They settle to the lowest point in a boat. In a regular gas station, they escape from the bottom of your car, but not on your boat. Per the Coast Guard, vapor from just one cup of gasoline packs the explosive power of five pounds of dynamite. Most boat explosions occur while refueling at a marina. Just under three hundred boat explosions are reported nationwide, but only if they cause multiple injuries, fatalities, or widespread damage, meaning money. We have had our share on the bay. I would like to enter this pretty picture into the record. On the one side, it lists some bay-related accidents, boat explosions, fires. And on the right-hand side, it lists all of the boat fires that other Safe Harbor marinas have experienced, and you'll notice some exploded huge buildings. These fires have occurred since they were acquired by Sun Companies. I didn't go further back than that. Just in six months alone, they had four major fires. Huge. From July twenty twenty-three on.
Your two minutes is up, ma'am. Next, so next on my list, I have Debbie, well, I have Mr. Coca, but he's sitting somewhere else. Okay, we'll call you in a minute.
Come on, Jack.
Hi, I'm Jack Coca, Charlie Isqueros' husband. And we live right across the street from the marina. And there was a big fire there in June of 2022, and it scared all of us. And it would have been a lot worse had they had fuel there, but they didn't at the time, so it was contained. But they didn't have enough water to control the fire, and the fireboats had to come and everything. Since we have no public water and we have no fire hydrants, many units were across the country. Firemen had to stretch hoses and carry the water from their tanks, but they were unable to contain the fire until the fireboats arrived later that night. We are fortunate that the fire at the fire in the marina did not occur with the two boat towers within thirty feet of the house across the street from ours. Had they cut fire, the explosions would have wiped out much of the community. The fueling there is very dangerous. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Ladato?
Yeah, that's right. Debbie Ladato, I live at 2106 Bayfront Terrace. I'm opposed to Bill 2824 as it pertains to the rezoning request from Safe Harbor Yacht Club. Rezoning issues are not new to our community with the yacht club. It seems that every time a new purchaser acquires the yacht club or calls it a marina, they commercialize it, and when it gets to that point, we end up here every time. So you've heard from some history from my other neighbors, but back in the eighties, the county was on our side all the way. They stood by us all the way. They went to the Board of Appeals. I sent you all some clips, newsletter articles. I won't go into all the detail and read verbatim, but basically, your county planner at the time said, "We fear that a commercial marina would greatly strain existing water and sewage facilities." Well, that's not changed. We're still on water. We're still on well and septic in the community, and so is the marina. So to wrap it up, I hope that you will do as your predecessors and vote in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Carl Jackson at the table? No. This panel is dismissed, and we'll bring up the next group. I've got four more, three more folks signed up.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think Mr. Jackson and Mr. Svenson stepped away from the table to let others sit down.
Sure. I've got Mr. Svenson, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Grothier, Grothier, and Ms. Tuden. That's all that's on the list. Oh, thank you. If there's anyone else in the audience that is prepared to bring testimony on these two bills tonight, there are three more chairs. We can continue the public hearing for those that are just here in the audience. And we'll begin with Mr. Svenson.
Hi, I'm Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland. It's my area. The purpose of my testimony is to express my support for what I hope will be two amendments to Bill 2824. 161 Ferguson Road, I support the C four zoning for this property, consistent with the PAB recommendation. The forest conservation area on this property is a really important clarification that ensures an appropriate buffer, and that was left off the maps and I think created a lot of confusion and angst. 1352 Shirleyville Road, I think there was a man from Shirleyville here earlier, but I support main, oh, cool. I support maintaining RLD zoning for this property, consistent with the PAB recommendation. The planning and zoning rationale for a change to R one zoning, in my opinion, is unconvincing. It's a stretch to suggest that this change is going to increase the supply of affordable housing. It's not a stretch that eleven or so new single-family homes will stress the abutting, winding rural roadway and feeder schools. More importantly, though, I think the county should be more concerned about the existing homeowners on the other side of the street, who are at real risk of being gentrified out. These are smaller 1950s-era homes on lots of about one acre. They would easily accommodate an ADU, which, in my opinion, would be a win-win. I mean, they'd add homeowner income, and they'd truly increase the supply of affordable housing in that area. Why not use some of Housing Trust Fund monies to support a grant and loan program for ADUs that are committed and restricted to renting to those that qualify? A while back, I told you about a sixty-two-year-old widow struggling to stay in her small Glenn Burney home, when I suggested to her that, hey, your lot looks like it could accommodate an ADU. She loved the idea, but she didn't have a clue how to go about it and had no money, so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackson?
I can't figure out what the order is here. I live at 1649 Orchard Beach Road, and from July of 2023 until now, the neighborhood of Orchard Beach Road, as well as Browns Woods Road, has been roiled by controversy because of an initially ill-conceived decision on the part of the Office of Planning and Zoning to create a, to allow new investors to create a world-class marina. We were saved in this because of the intervention of Amanda Fielder on behalf of the residents who complained vociferously to her. However, the Office of Planning and Zoning withdrew commercialization, that is MA two designation, from the properties that had rejected it, but the Office of Planning and Zoning still pushed MA two for one small piece of property on the street. This is still spot zoning, creating a commercialized marina in a wholly residential area. However, the new bill designation created by the county council at the behest of Amanda Fielder removes the worst aspects of MA two. That is, I won't end up with a gasoline tank next to my property. I won't end up with a bar, a tavern, or heavy lift capacity because of the way that MA one B is zoned. MA one B is an improvement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have next on my list Dieter Grothier, Grothor? Oh, he left. Oh, my apologies. Valerie Tuden?
I'll continue where Carl left off. I am also on Orchard Beach Road, and essentially, you know, Planning and Zoning said that seven properties should be rezoned as MA two, which has a whole array of items, including my property, which, and actually, five, I think, six out of the seven properties don't meet the minimum requirement of MA two, one-acre zone, including 1637, who remains recommended, and they had applied originally, but remains recommended as MA two, which we now want to change to the MA one B, which takes the most serious parts off. And two items here, one, you know, all the same issues that we've heard. There's traffic. There's issues. You get run over the street if you're walking during the day. It's near Cantler's Restaurant, which has a huge amount of traffic. You can't support that down in the area. Boat rentals would be a disaster down there. We want a community that has owner-occupied locations that may have some slip rentals. My property has no slip rentals, and I was recommended to be rezoned at one-third of an acre versus one. Full acre required for MA two zoning, and that should not happen. Amanda Fielder has supported us by getting our properties taken off the list, but I'm very concerned that even if this one property, you know, gets rezoned, that zoning is going to be back and try to push a commercial zoning on even these very small properties, which have a few slips in them, with no other items. And that should not happen. We should not be forced to go to commercial zoning, and we, but we do reluctantly support the one A B, one MA one B.
Thank you, ma'am.
Support.
Thank you, ma'am. Frederick Rose?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Frederick Rose, and I'm here in support of the amendment that being reduced or introduced regarding my family's property at 1628 Wald Drive in Pasadena. For reasons previously stated, we requested that the property return to original R two zoning from what's been proposed for open space. And R two is typical of all the lots and properties in the neighborhood. This was a unique happening. And my family and I really would like to thank Councilman Volkey for considering our concerns and directing us, and we also want to express our thanks to Christina Pampa from Officer Planning and Zoning to help us navigate through this zoning process, getting it posted and getting the signs up there. And thank you, everybody on the county council, for considering our zoning application and hopefully resolving our concerns with this property. We just want to be typical of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Car York?
Am I on here? Good, thank you. Maureen Car York, I am president of Greater Severna Park Council, and I want to address a general topic today that's part of the bill's under consideration. Plan 2040 provides that the region plans are to be part of the cyclical comprehensive planning process to replace the small-area plans used in the past. I'm one of the people who worked on those small-area plans over decades of work. I've lived in the area for thirty-six years and pretty much have been working on those things all that time. One of the key parts of the small-area plans was the protection of Ritchie Highway. Ritchie Highway, as it progresses through Severna Park and a part of Pasadena, has a much more residential look and feel than other parts of Ritchie Highway. Once you get up north of Marley Station, it's pretty much, except for Herrendale, it's pretty much nonstop commercial. And we have sought to maintain, through the small-area plans, the commercial development to be at the nodes, the major intersections, and that has worked very well, actually, over the past three decades that I've been working on this, and I would hope to be able to preserve that. There is one point included in the, in the document that you're considering that would allow the rezoning from small-business district, it had once been residential, now small-business district, to commercial of three, four properties on Ritchie Highway, and they would be in the middle of the long block. So you've got houses on either side, houses behind, houses across the street, and we would like to. would like to avoid that, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have your name on the list, so you have the floor. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Alice Rasmussen. I live in Arnold. I am here, and very ignorant of a lot of the language and understanding of what's going on, I am just trying to keep up. I have lived in the Arnold area for 62 years. I am hoping the council will reconsider any rezoning that would increase the housing, the population, schooling, the traffic on College Parkway, Route 2, Ritchie Highway. When I had to work 30 years ago in parole, I could count that it took me seven minutes to get to Route 2 from Arnold to Parole Plaza. That is not the case. I am hoping the council will realize the traffic buildup, the school, population. I am thankful to Ms. Fiedler for her work and just understanding of the community we are trying to keep in Arnold. As I said, living for 62 years in Arnold, my parents brought us down here, my mother said to my father, "You're taking me from Baltimore City, you're taking me down to the sticks." I am still in the sticks here in Arnold, thankful to my father, two of my siblings have had to move out of the state, not had to, but did remove out of the county, the state, due to the increasing of just everything of what has become. I am just opposed to any zoning that does increase the traffic, the housing, the population, enlarges the schooling, and I thank you, Ms. Fiedler, for that. That's all I will say. This is off the road here. I will hopefully be retiring with my 67, 68 years in the next year. I am going to need my pension, I am going to need my salary, I'm hoping I don't have to come back and go to work. I may have to for my property taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. This panel—is dismissed. That concludes the folks that had signed up in advance, so if there's anyone remaining in the audience that wishes to testify on Bill 2724, let's fill the six seats and then keep it going from there. We're going to start here. Ms. Leahy, state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Amy Leahy. I live in Severna Park, and I'm also on the board for the Greater Severna Park Council, and I just have some general statements that I would like to make concerning this rezoning that's going on. The comprehensive—the Region 4 comprehensive rezoning has proposed zoning changes for our area, which is Broadneck Peninsula, Severna Park, and Pasadena. 1,476 proposed zoning changes. It sounds like a lot, and it is. Forty-six of those are owner applications to change the zoning on their property. Seventy-one proposed zoning changes are from county staff, no property owner application to change it. Two are proposed by the Planning Advisory Board, and 1,354 proposed zoning changes came from the Office of Planning and Zoning. A lot of these are small map adjustments, and no—we're not really concerned about those, but others are large-scale zoning changes over multiple properties. I'm already hearing—we are already hearing from community members about these changes. A lion's share of those proposed changes are coming from the county, not private property owners and/or developers. So a prime example of one of the changes that I really wanted to talk about tonight is right in the heart of Severna Park on Ritchie Highway, between McKenzie Road and Robinson Road, where we have commercial C3 shopping centers on both sides of the highway. Planning and zoning is recommending that we change it to mixed-use commercial, and two of the property owners have already reached out with opposition to those changes being proposed. So the difference between C3 and mixed-use is that basically you can put housing into the mixed-use zoning, and we've already seen the massive amount of housing that's being developed, so we—
Thank you, Ms. Leahy.
—have concerns about that, traffic and schools.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Terry Wallman. I live at 1616 Orchard Beach Road. I want to make the point that Orchard Beach Road is barely a third of a mile long, there are like 10 to 12 houses along it. One of the properties, which you all know about, I'll call it 1637 Orchard Beach Road, claimed that, oh, everybody in the neighborhood wanted to be upgraded to MA2. That was not true, that was false, got rescinded. They claimed to have an acre of land, Planning and Zoning does not have any documentation from them that they really have an acre of land, it's more like eight tenths of an acre, and on top of that, there is a lawsuit from 1998, '99 on file in the county that goes in perpetuity, saying that a certain amount of that, maybe another .15 acre, cannot be used to be built on because of a previous claim that was settled. On top of that, I'm really here to praise Amanda Fiedler, who came to our neighborhood, checked it out, learned about the desire to build a world-class marina in this little neighborhood, and held her own session at Broadneck Library, invited us all, and basically came up—I think you all know this—with the MA1B plan to satisfy the neighbor that wanted to build a world-class marina, but to deny them from MA2 status, which would change a great deal. So that's been a very important feature to us, and I really appreciate you all listening to her. I hope you all support her supporting us.
Take my seat, and don't start the clock yet.
Hi, I'm Linda Elliott at 1616 Orchard Beach Road. We shouldn't even have to be here tonight. The fact is, those of us from Brownswood's community, this is a situation where things at zoning went horribly wrong, they ignored their own rules. The requirement for MA2 is one acre of land. The application submitted by the owners at 1637 Orchard Beach was .8 acres that they had. Right then, it should have cut the whole thing right there at the end. The hearing, 60 people wrote in in objection, not just us in our community, people around the creek, in Brownswood's, a lot of people wrote in. So this is a compromise that Amanda Fiedler helped us come to, to try to get rid of the ugliness of an MA2, and I hope you do support her in this bill, because we're very grateful that she came in. Fact is, we shouldn't be here, you all need to look into planning and zoning, there's something going on wrong with how they're following or not following their own rules. It would have been spot zoning at the worst. Thank you. That was—can she have the rest of my time?
Doesn't really work that way, but ma'am, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Alma Hansen-Darden. I live at 309 Forest Beach Road in Annapolis, Maryland, and I am the president of the Community Association, have been the president for years, and I am a longtime resident of Brownswood's. Our community consists of Brownswood's Road, Forest Beach Road, Orchard Beach Road, and Mount Laurel Lane. Right now, we are on public water. We have no public system, septic system. We have no sidewalks, and we all are RA1, and we are asking to deny the MA2, and like she said, we sort of accepted the MA1B. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sir?
Okay. All right. Dr. Randolph Rowell from 2134 Mulberry Hill Road, Annapolis, Maryland, which is adjacent to Brownswood's, and like Brownswood's community, we've been in this community for however 150 years. These are desolate communities where our ancestors were actually slaves. I am here again to an amendment to 2824, and I was here last meeting, whenever we met, and very quickly, I've met with my community, and a number of people are in the process of applying for to get the signs and all that, but I have to say that it's really a difficult process for older people. So I've got—I reached out to the Planning and Zoning Office, and they're going to help us understand what's going on. We have a meeting coming up this Thursday, and we're going to help folks who want to change their zoning from R1 to R2. We are in a housing shortage, and many of us are getting older, and we have children who can't build there, and are looking all over the county, they work in the county, but they can't build in the neighborhood in which their ancestors were enslaved for over 150 years. So I invite you, Amanda, to come to our community, so we can show you the history and the old store that used to be there over 150 years ago. So we have much rich history that we stand to lose, because what happens when people leave, when people can't build, is one of the results of gentrification. We want our communities to invite—we have so many—a diverse community, but we do not want to be in a situation where I can't have my next generation, my grandchildren, to build on those properties. Similar problem, I support this effort in Brownswood's, because this is where the other half of my ancestors lived. I'm a Green, my Anderson side is on that side, where we owned 10 acres of land that was on the water. These things are happening, but I just say I support them, and I support—I hope that you can take a second look at this amendment—
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bray?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and members of the council. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Mill Creek Marina, again, Kinley Bray, YVS Law. Unfortunately, the property owners were not able to be here tonight, but they asked me to be here in support of Ms. Fiedler's Amendment Number Five. So you've heard just now about—quite a bit about 1637 Orchard Beach Road. I'm here also to sing Ms. Fiedler's praises and to say thank you for coordinating meetings with the community. This is an instance where the zoning just really didn't fit the nonconforming uses that are on this property. The Mill Creek Marina sought to reduce the number of slips from 26 to 10, but their nonconforming use actually prevented them from doing so, because the area is accessible in different ways, and the old nonconforming use provisions and the order did not allow for rehabilitation or renovation of the property without a zoning change. At the time, they requested MA2, because that was the only thing that was available that was going to allow a commercial marina. So Bill 324 earlier this year changed that, created the MA1B Zone District, and was a great proposal to allow existing marinas in Mill—like Mill Creek—to become conforming without opening the door to restaurants, taverns, fuel sales, and other commercial enterprises that are not compatible with this neighborhood and many other neighborhoods in Annapolis. Once MA1B was in place, Mill Creek requested an amendment to change the pending rezoning request to MA1B. We think also, like the neighbors, that this is an appropriate compromise, that it's good for the neighborhood and for the property owner, and we would request your support of this amendment, which I believe is Amendment Number Five tonight, to rezone the property from its existing R1, not to MA2, which was originally requested, but instead to MA1B. Thank you.
This panel is dismissed. Are there other individuals in the audience wanting to speak on Bills 27, 24, and 2824? Did you already speak? We're going to start on the right here. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record.
You're right, my left.
I know, as soon as I said it, I was like, that was not going to work.
Beverly Harold Jacobs, representing my mom's property, 1347 Shirleyville Road. Am I supposed to—
Yep, you have two minutes.
All right. You didn't say you got your two minutes, so I didn't want to start. Anyway, I oppose the change. RDL is what Shirleyville is, not just a road, it's a community. We have a total of 13 houses on the left side, and this—my parents worked a dollar a day to buy that property, and we weren't permitted to have, you know, generational wealth. This is handed down to me now, I'm a senior, and my mom passed at 100 years old in '22. My sister, of course, is going to hand it down to her and hers, and this is this legacy. And now, they come in and they want to change, and like I say, it's a total of 13 properties on the left-hand side, where 1352 is 11.3, proposing up to 33 houses. We don't—we have a total, which we didn't have, but two lights on there, there's no sidewalk, there is a single road that you have to ease over. We can't even get out of the neighborhood with the traffic now on Jones Station Road with, I don't know, Ocean City or Francis Guy Key Bridge, what's causing it? You can't get out on College Parkway, you can't get anywhere. And so with additional houses, and like I said, everybody's there now as a senior, our parents have handed it down, and to just disrupt us like that, it makes no sense. First, there was no signage placed anywhere to notify us, we only found out this by internet and all about this meeting today. There has not been one sign at all placed to notify anybody in that community.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Sir?
Hi, I'm Paul Spadaro, president of the Magathie River Association. I want to ask a question before I testify a little bit at a procedure. If I want to testify next week on a certain amendment to this bill, would I be allowed to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, if this—if this bill is amended this evening, anyone here tonight can come back and, during that public hearing, speak on the amended bill, most definitely. Anyways, you have—what is your—
So I would—there's an amendment that will be coming for one of these on this bill, and more likely that I would testify at that point. So if I testify tonight, can I testify two weeks from now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, fine, and I'll just take a few minutes. Okay, so I'm Paul Spadaro, president of the Magathie River Association. That's it? Okay.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say just a few little things. As president of Magathie River Association, I have to deal with a lot of environmental issues, and my biggest concern is the river, and one of the things I shall point out is the county doesn't have a boat, they can't measure the river, they don't even have any people to do that, they don't even have a drone, they can't even observe what they see. The Magathie River Association has both. We have a—we have an air force, we have Magathie One, we have a drone, we have boats, we do monitoring. We know what your mistakes are when you pass things here, because we measure them. We are concerned about anything along Ritchie Highway. If you attended the state of the Magathie that we had in April, you would have seen their big, consistent, black dot on Catell Creek, which is the main creek bordering Ritchie Highway. The water quality coming off from the stormwater runoff is just terrible, and I would prefer that you do not pass anything that's going to increase high density along Ritchie Highway.
Thank you, sir. Okay, everybody, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Tyson Dorman, 2100 Bayfront Terrace, president of the Dickery Point Community Association. So I'm concerned with Bill 2824, in particular to property on 2116 Bayfront Terrace. You know, we've talked—my neighbors have talked about it as safe harbor. The bigger concern is, is it's a piece of property, and once this is established, it's for the life of the property regardless of who owns it. So more concerned with the piece of property and proposing an amendment to keep it MA3. And I'm going to kind of give an example here. If next to any one of your houses, there was a tavern— If next to any one of your houses, there was a tavern operating illegally, or a bait and chum shop operating illegally, which kind of stinks, would it be advisable to change it because they're out of compliance and allow that to be an operating business? I'm sure none of you would want that. In this zoning, it clearly says right here, this changes to MA2 is consistent with the existing usage. Okay, so they're out of compliance, and let's change it to bring them into compliance. That is a very dangerous precedent to set. I've sat on four planning and zoning committees, licensed architects, and I've actually designed, done master planning for cities. That is a very dangerous precedent that is being set. You guys will regret that on any of these pieces of property. So, you know, I'm going to sort of end here and say, you know, we want it to stay MA3, we need an amendment to do that, and we need your help doing it. Over.
Thank you. Sir, state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Jeremy Chelius, 1346 Tidings Road, Annapolis. I'm here to oppose the bill regarding the rezoning of the Safe Harbor Pedigree Point. I'm not, as Tyson said, I'm not necessarily opposed to Safe Harbor, the entity, I actually keep my boat there and I enjoy the property. I am opposed to what could happen if Safe Harbor sold, or what would happen with that property. And it is a community marina right now, we have food truck Fridays and people enjoy it as an amenity to the neighborhood. And Annapolis has structured maritime districts where we work very hard to keep them maritime districts, and to put an inappropriate use and upzone something when there are other maritime districts that are more appropriate for it, seems like a mistake for planning and zoning to be making, and we should be focused on keeping neighborhood marinas, neighborhood marinas, and maritime districts operating in maritime districts and not deviating from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Ronette Cook, I am a lifelong resident of Arnold, Maryland. I grew up on Joyce Lane, I was raised on both Joyce Lane and also Shirleyville Road. My grandmother's house is the very first one on that street. We are a community very close knit, so I'm concerned with this thing about affordable housing, I'm concerned about the overpopulation, I'm concerned about the traffic, I'm concerned about traffic, I'm concerned about crime, I'm concerned about the residents who live there. Because what becomes affordable to what some would say is affordable, is not going to be affordable at all to the residents who are there. We have legacy on that road, in that community. Every homeowner who has built on that property over 100 and some years is still the homeowners of those properties, and the only persons that they've been sold to or passed down to are members of the family. It's a compromise to the integrity of the culture of that community around us within, and just like the gentlemen here from Mulberry Hill and Brownswood's, we can trace our slaves back to that property. The pulley's back as far as Shirleyville goes and lines up with shot Middletown Road. And so it's a very personal thing, it's a very emotional thing for us. We want to be able to live there and to continue that generational wealth. We want a community where we can come back to and be able to identify the stories that we tell. We don't want it to become a folk tale, we want to be able to go there and identify this. So I am opposed to Bill 2824. For those reasons, schools are overpopulated, the roads are overpopulated, the stores are overpopulated, we cannot build enough in that Arnold area to support any more homes. And we've seen this go on in Joyce Lane, Brownswood's, we've seen it, now we want to do it in Shirleyville, we won't be able to identify Arnold, Maryland. We recently took down the house that was there over 110 years. We are opposed to Bill 28.
Thank you, ma'am.
24.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Tashima Cook, I lived on Shirleyville Road as well, the first house, I grew up there, this is my mother. My mother grew up in that home, my aunt is here, she resides in that home, my grandfather grew up in that home, and my great-grandmother, Virginia Cook, was the one who built it, and the original home still stands today. And what I just want to add here is that Shirleyville Road is a one-road community, one road in, one road out. There are properties on the left side, which are all of the Black and Indigenous legacy residents who have lived there for, coming up on a century now. It is one of the first African-American communities that was established in Arnold, Maryland, and that is noted by other community members as a treasure to Arnold. On the other side of the road is just one home, and that's the home that is on the property that you guys are considering rezoning. That home is currently zoned RLD, our properties are zoned R1. And I spoke with Eric, I believe his name, his last name is Ketterling, I'm not sure, he works at the department that does the planning and zoning, the comprehensive planning and zoning. He let me know that the staff who recommended that this property be rezoned to Zone One actually said that because the properties on the other side of Shirleyville Road are already zoned one. But what they don't know, what I want to offer here, is that, again, all of those properties are owned by legacy residents, and we have a community culture, as my mom stated, we have an understanding of our community values, and so if anybody were to sell the property, it would be in alignment with those values, which are very important to us as legacy residents there. If the other property is rezoned, it's not owned by somebody who knows our values now. Now, it's not owned by somebody who knows the legacy and the history of all of the residents who live there, and so it would not be developed in alignment with our values. It's already shown by what they've requested for it to be rezoned to Zone Three, and they originally requested it to R5, which is a maximum, there's five homes per acre, correct? That is absolutely outside of the values and the culture of our community, and we want to preserve that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience prepared to speak this evening on Bills 27, 24, and All right, I have two, I have two seats, this is going to be my last call for public testimony tonight. If you're planning to testify tonight, we still have two seats up here at the table. Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Janice Harold Slaughter. As my sister stated, we do have legacy property on Shirleyville Road in Arnold, Maryland. That neighborhood, as they say, it takes a village to raise a child, that's my village. All of those neighbors, they're just not just neighbors, they're family. A lot of them are on fixed income, you bring all those houses in, you're going to raise taxes, what's going to happen with them? And there's so much traffic in Arnold, I remember just, Arnold, growing up in Arnold, it was just a quiet area, you felt safe. What's going to happen with these people, everybody coming in, all these houses into that neighborhood? Right now, those seniors feel safe, they're not going to feel safe, you have more traffic, people they don't know coming in there, you change the integrity of the neighborhood. It's not just about money, it can't be just about money, we have to think about culture, you know, family, all these traffic, I mean, that road cannot handle it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Renita Cook, I do stumble, I stutter, so excuse me, I mean, not excuse me, but I am one of the youngest residents that live on Shirleyville Road at 1345 Shirleyville Road. I am currently the first house on the street. I do have great concern for other homes coming to Shirleyville. I feel safe right now, I am not a people person, I live there because it's a small community. I do not want to be in a community with many people, be because of the way I feel. I am, I am not a person that trusts a lot of people, and that is my safe haven there for right now, until I go to the glory of heaven, and I would love it to remain that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Gleason, and I'm kind of doing this extemporaneously because I hadn't planned to testify, but I'm on, there seems to be two different amendments on 2724 and 2824 for the property at 4358 Mountain Road. I'm a little confused what the two amendments, why there's two different things, and feel free to enlighten me if you'd like, but bottom line, I'm opposed to the change in, I'm going to get it right, I'm opposed to 2824 change and I'm for the 2724 change, go from, I'm sorry, I put it backwards. I'm for the amendment on 2724 and against the amendment on 2824, and for a lot of the same reasons that people have expressed tonight, concerned there's no, there's no sidewalks, there's no public transportation, there's no plans for upgrading any of that, and adding additional residential development in that area, I think, would be detrimental to the neighborhood and to the schools and the traffic, and it wouldn't be affordable housing either. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, County Council. My name is John Rollin, I live at 8270 Waterford Road. I am here opposed to the Amendment Number 10 on the Bill 2824. I own a mobile repair business, RP Auto and Truck, and over the last few years, my family and I have been uprooted at our home by the commercial property next to us, that was a correction made by the County Council, I'm sorry, by Office of Planning and Zoning. And originally, I reached out to Mr. Volkey, who was very helpful, and it was recommended for me to possibly change to C4 as well. At the time, I didn't know what that meant, you know, I don't know a whole lot about that stuff, but during this period, I ended up starting this business, you know, in hopes that I would eventually be able to build something for my family. And currently, you know, we don't have a good living situation with the commercial property next to us, it's R1, and I'd like to get C4 for it in order to put my mobile repair trucks on the property. And it's pretty consistent with the area, you know, for contractor storage and such. Now, rather than worry about someone driving through my bedroom window that's, you know, on the property line 15 feet away with tractor trailers, it'd be perfect for doing just that, putting my mobile repair trucks on the property and converting the home that's currently there to an office. I don't come from a wealthy family, I wasn't given anything in life, I'm doing everything from the bottom up, and I'm just trying to provide something better for my family. Please help me do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elliott, I believe you've already testified on this bill.
I wanted to speak on Shirleyville, that's a different bill.
No, it's not a different bill.
Can I point out that's the headquarters of Mill Creek?
Thank you, appreciate that. We're in a joint hearing on Bills 27-24 and 2824, so I appreciate, this, this panel is dismissed, and this public hearing is now closed. I wanted to ask my colleagues if we need a comfort break.
Yes, but before we do that, if I can just make a few comments for the folks that came out tonight. One of the first walk-ups for Shirleyville Road mentioned the lack of information and how hard it is to get information. I know Office of Planning and Zoning has worked within their capabilities, the council we've talked about has had advertisements out, but I know that the general public, there's a large portion of the general public that still is not aware, so when I saw on the map Shirleyville Road, I knocked on your doors, I don't know if anybody remembers that, but I knocked on your doors, and when I saw the zoning change, I thought, there's no way there's no opposition to this. So I reached out to a gentleman who lived on the road, I said, I need you to help me spread the word, and I put it in my newsletter, and I put it on Facebook, and you all responded exponentially, we are at over 120 opposition emails, so. I just, I just want to say, I had hoped to have an amendment this evening, it's not ready yet, but there is one coming to retain RLD, so just stay tuned, thank you for coming out tonight.
Can I have a motion to recess for five?
Ledbetter, so moved.
Second?
Second.
The council stands in recess for five minutes, we'll be back to start with amendments. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 27-24 as amended and Bill Number 28-24 as amended.
Bill Number 2724, In ordinance concerning general development plan, Region Four Plan. Bill Number 2824, In ordinance concerning comprehensive zoning, Region Four.
Thank you. We've now reached the portion of our Region Four Plan in these two bills where we'll be toggling back and forth, some amendments, some properties have two amendments, one for each of the corresponding bills. Madam Secretary, for the upcoming amendments, for at least 10 days before this legislative session, were signs posted on the subject property and was notice of the proposed change of zoning posted to the County Council website.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five to Bill 28-24.
Amendment Number Five to Bill 2824, this amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 1637 Orchard Beach Road, Annapolis, from MA2 light commercial marina to MA1B neighborhood marina.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this property was well described in public testimony, it is the impetus for the MA1B zoning addition that this council passed, I urge my colleagues to support it this evening, it has overwhelming support from the property owner and the community. Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Raviyan, second.
Would the administration like to respond to Amendment Number Five to Bill 2824?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Similar to two weeks ago, I had prepared comments for this, but I think that a lot of what I wanted to read into the record has already been read into the record this evening. The new district that was created earlier this year, the MA1B, creates a nice compromise for the applicant and the neighborhood, as you've just heard, and so OPZ supports the amendment.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five to Bill 2824. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Four to Bill 2724 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, I appreciate the applause, but we'll be here all night, guys. Amendment, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number Four to Bill 2724, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 1628 Wall Drive Pasadena, from conservation to residential low density.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, this does exactly what Mr. Rose asked us to do in his testimony, so with that, I would move the amendment and ask for my colleagues' support, thank you.
Would the administration like to respond to Amendment Four of Bill 2724?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. In the application to the County Council, the owner indicated that the property is not protected in perpetuity, and the owner wants the property to be zoned R2, similar to other privately held properties in the neighborhood, and staff offers no objection to this amendment, which is for the region plan and plus the next amendment for the zoning.
Second?
Thanks.
Oh, did I forget to get a second? Oh. Is there any questions, my colleagues, regarding Amendment Four to Bill 27-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four to Bill 27-24.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Four to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 6 to bill 2824.
Amendment number 6 to bill 2824, this amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 1628 Wall Drive Pasadena from OS open space to R2 residential.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, companion to the amendment we just passed, move the amendment.
Second.
Does the administration have any comments?
No additional comments.
No comments from my colleagues. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 6 to bill 2824.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 6 to bill 2824 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 5 to bill 2724.
Amendment number 5 to bill 2724, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the properties known as 8253 and 8257 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard Pasadena from commercial to residential low density.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This retains the existing zoning on this property, it's a split zone property, in the front is commercial, in the back is residential low density. This is an area of my district that has undergone a lot of change over time. This area has moved from being a largely residential area into somewhat of a more commercial area, but there still are residences there, so with that, that is what this will do. Move the amendment.
Second. Does the administration have any comments on amendment number 5 to bill 2724?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Because of the uses in the area, SR 32 during the Plan 2040 process recommended for commercial planned land use for the entirety of 8253 and 8257 BNA Boulevard. As Mr. Volkey said, these properties are currently split zone C4 and R1, with the C4 fronting on BNA Boulevard and R1 on the rear of the properties. The properties are developed residentially, however, they are adjacent to heavy commercial uses. The owner applied for R1 zoning on the entirety of both properties, which is not consistent with the current or anticipated future development of the area. The SAC and PAB agreed with the staff recommendation of C4 zoning for the entire property. The amendment does revert the zoning to the existing C4/R1 split. Obviously, OPZ is not in favor of split zoning, because it can be and tends to be arbitrary, but we also don't think R1 is the right zoning for this property either.
Mr. Volkey.
Just final point, I appreciate that additional history from Ms. Pompa, and I would just say, part of what I was trying to do with this amendment is split the baby in a way, because the owner has requested R1, but the planning staff has recommended C4, so by going back to the existing split zone, I've effectively just kept everything status quo.
It's a compromise.
And this is what, this is what, this is what the property owner is requesting?
The property owner requested that the entire property go to R1. What staff has said is, and SAC and PAB, they've said the entire property should be C4, whereas the property owner said they want the whole thing to be R1. So what I've done is just basically gone back and said, let's do nothing. Let's let them keep the back half of the property R1 like they want, and keep the front half of the property C4, which is more in line with what staff wants.
Is there a commercial operation on the front of the property?
On these, no. There are, they have a lot of commercial in that area, and a lot of that has moved into a commercial use, but this particular, these particular properties are still residential properties.
I see, okay, thank you. Ms. Raviyan, I think this is a question for Councilman Volkey. You mentioned that there had been sort of a shift over time, and is, is my correct understanding that it was more predominantly residential and is moving in the direction of commercial?
Affirmative.
Okay, so this sort of is like allowing him to hold on, to the property owner, to hold on to what had been around for a while.
Yeah, I look at it as similar to the term some people used about legacy, right? Like, the idea is, this person is a legacy property owner that's there that says, this is what I want my zoning to be, so I'm trying to respect that as much as I can, while also factoring in staff's recommendation.
Seeing no other questions or comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 5 to bill 2724.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 5 to bill 2724 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please call, please read amendment number 7 to bill 2824.
Amendment number 7 to bill 2824, this amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the properties known as 8253 and 8257 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard Pasadena from C4 highway commercial to R1 residential.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, again, this is the companion amendment to the amendment the council just passed, move the amendment, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ditto from the administration?
Correct.
Great. Any further comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 7 to bill 2824.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 7 to bill 2824 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 6 to bill 2724.
Amendment number 6 to bill 2724, this amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as 2256 and No Number Lake Drive Pasadena from parks and open space to residential low density.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you. So again, this is a little bit nuanced, I'm going to try to explain it in a way that makes the most sense. So currently, the property is zoned R2. The recommendation from staff, SAC, et cetera, has been to go to an open space zoning. This is in a community, this is a, basically, community access to water is what it is. My problem with it is, this was a staff recommended change, I don't have a problem with everything staff has recommended, but on a lot like this that is on the bay, that is out there, that may have some economic value to the community association, taking it from an R2 zoning to an open space zoning deprives them of all value that may exist on that property. I'm not saying that it's got any development potential, or that anyone's looking to develop it, no one's reached out to me about that, to put that on the record, but I have a problem with taking the property from a zoning designation that has, at least in theory, some economic value, to a zoning designation that has absolutely no economic value, when it has not been asked for by the property owner. So for that reason, I spoke with staff about it, we discussed this one, and this is one that I'm asking to go back to the existing zoning, because I just have a problem, even if it's only a .2 acre parcel, I have a problem with depriving the people who own this of all value in that property. So with that, I would move the amendment, thank you for your support.
Second. Would the administration like to weigh in on this amendment?
Sure. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So these two properties are community-owned areas in the Bayside Beach neighborhood. The Plan 2040 adopted planned land use as conservation. These properties are not in a conservation use and are more aligned with parks and open space, which is what led OPZ to recommend a planned land use of parks and open space, and then open space zoning. The amendment is to maintain the existing R2 zoning and change the planned land use to low-density residential. We don't offer an objection to the amendment.
Are there any questions of my colleagues? Who owns this property?
The Community Association.
Yeah, the Bayside Beach Improvement Association.
Do they have a special taxing district?
They don't.
No, okay. Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. This is probably a question from Ms. Pompa. Is this similar to the situation that we had in Bay Ridge community?
The big difference with the Bay Ridge community is that the community came out and forced to say they opposed, yes, that open space zoning. Now, that property is in conservation in perpetuity, they have a conservation easement, but the community also bought that property, they financed it, they still have a mortgage on it, it's probably a little bit different situation, but it is similar.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 6 to bill 27-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 6 to bill 2724 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 8 to bill 2824.
Amendment number 8 to bill 2824, this amendment changes the zoning of the properties known as 2256 and No Number Lake Drive Pasadena from OS open space to R2 residential.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, again, companion amendment to the amendment that was just passed by the council. Move the amendment.
Second. Administration?
No further comments.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please read, please call the roll on amendment number 8 to bill 2824.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 8 to bill 2824 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 7 to bill 27-24.
Amendment number 7 to bill 2724, this amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as 10 and 12 Clover Hill Road Pasadena from small business to residential low-medium density and removes the Village Center development policy overlay.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this amendment comes from what sometimes happens when you're only looking at the maps, right? And so I don't mean this to be unkind to SAC or anybody else who looked at this, but basically, there is the old Revere Beach Post Office, that's the property on the corner, that property is being rezoned to small business, that was the recommendation, and somebody looked at the map and said, well, there's also some commercial that's fronting there on Fort Smallwood Road, and there's some on the other side, so let's just connect all those strips, because that looks good from a planning perspective. Problematically, these two properties, 10 and 12 Clover Hill Road, are actually people's residences. They live there, they are being used in a residential capacity, they're not even in a transition state, these are actually just people's houses. These folks never asked for this, this is something that was a staff recommended change. So when I had an opportunity to speak with OPZ about this, I think we all agreed, at least I hope, that I think this would not be appropriate to rezone these folks' homes from being a residential use, which is what they are, and they've never asked to change, into some kind of small business district for these. So that is the impetus behind this amendment, and nine that'll come in a moment, move the
Would the administration like to comment on amendment number 7?
Sure. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So everything Mr. Volkey said is in my talking points, up to the point where I say that these properties at 10 and 12 Clover Hill are still adjacent to R5 zoning to the northwest, and therefore, you know, and they're obviously still in residential use, therefore, OPZ offers no objection to reverting the zoning for these properties back to R5, plus with the amendment to the development policy area overlay and the planned land use.
So I just had a question about the Village Center aspect of this. Can you just indulge and tell me a little bit about what a Village Center overlay entails, or looks like?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The Village Center overlay is something that was established in Plan 2040. There's actually a lot of information about different Village Centers in the county, and it is a designation where we may want to do, for instance, sector planning in the future, we heard a lot about it related to Ridgely Avenue, I'm sure you all remember that. Some areas want to do a Village Area Sector Plan, and others don't. It, you know, it's kind of interesting, just because we as planners look at an area and say, this could, you know, this is a crossroads, or this could be a good area for future planning efforts, not everybody agrees with us, as you've heard tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Is it appropriate to have residential properties encompassed in a Village Center overlay? I mean, it seems like there's a mix here.
You could. I think we recommended Village Center overlay in this area because we were recommending it go to small business, but with that coming out, we amended the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Volkey.
I just want to add one thing, if you take a look, Madam Chair, on exhibit G1 to amendment 7, you can see there that this is not removing the entirety of the Village Center, it's simply taking those residential properties out of the Village Center. So I just point that out because the Village Center overlay, that's the sort of hatched part there, that continues in the, it covers the area that is the old post office, it covers the fire station, which is what's at the bottom of that map, it covers across the street, which is a large shopping center, and it covers up on the corner, which is a strip mall that's got four different units in it. So this still does retain the Village Center to a degree, it just takes out the houses.
Okay, I understand, I just, but aren't you removing that later? Never mind.
No, I don't think on this one it is.
Okay. Okay, great. If there's no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 7 to bill 2724.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 7 to bill 2724 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 9 to bill 2824.
Amendment number 9 to bill 2824, this amendment changes the zoning of the properties known as 10 and 12 Clover Hill Road Pasadena from SB small business to R5 residential.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this does, again, it's the companion amendment, and I would just point out that this does not remove the entirety of the Village overlay either, so move the amendment.
No further comments.
I don't see any further questions. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 9 to bill 2824.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 9 to bill 2824 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 8 to bill 2724.
Amendment number 8 to bill 2724, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 8270 Waterford Road Pasadena from commercial to residential low density.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to put a few things on the record, I'm going to ask to hold this amendment and amendment 10 to bill 2824 this evening until our next meeting. So I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Rollin, who came up and testified it's his property that's affected, I've heard from other surrounding neighbors, so what I committed to him, and I'm just saying this publicly so that both he knows it and the other people who are watching, who I know are in the community and have some concerns about this, I am going to go out and do a site visit at his property, spend some time, see what he's got going on out there, and also speak with some of the neighbors, and hopefully, they can join us as well, and try to figure out if there is a solution that maybe can work for everybody. So I'm going to hold it for the time being, come back in two weeks and take a look at where we are. So I just want to put that on the record, so everybody knows that. I'm going to hold amendments 8 for 2724 and 10 for 2824 tonight, thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 9 to bill 27-24.
Amendment number 9 to bill 2724, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 99 Truck House Road Severna Park from residential low density and conservation to residential low density, residential low medium density and conservation.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, welcome back to District 5. This amendment is in response to the ownership of this property, it is a church, and they had long considered the split zone of the property, particularly the back part, an investment for their future. They are strongly opposed to the change, and have asked that the staff change be amended back to what exists on the property today, because it does potentially have implications[1749.80] for their future. Motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to comment on amendment number nine to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, the existing R-five on the rear of the lots running on the west side of Truckhouse Road is one of the largest misalignments between the county's digital parcel and zoning layers that staff found when a county-wide analysis was conducted in 2020, and that was the precursor to what became bill twenty-two, twenty-three. Staff believes the R-five zoning line was meant to terminate at the rear property lines of the Truckhouse Road parcels, not cross into these properties, and it's actually a very long line where the misalignment occurs. The misalignment is so large that subdivision plats for Oak Hill Estates and West Home to the north took advantage of the R-five to include smaller lots at the rear of the subdivisions. This is not a best practice when it comes to zoning or subdivision, and OPZ took this comprehensive zoning opportunity to recommend the misalignment be corrected for its entire length. The property has an adopted planned land use of low-density residential and conservation along the lines of a floodplain platted in a utility easement. For ninety-nine Truckhouse Road, the amendment proposes reverting back to the arbitrary split of R-two, R-five, and open space zoning. OPZ recommended a split of R-two and open space zoning based on the adopted planned land use, the R-two zoning to the east, and the floodplain boundaries identified in the utility easement plaque granted to Anarundel County. OPZ could support the zoning of the property as entirely R-two or R-five, but not the currently existing arbitrary split, and therefore, we are opposed to the amendment.
Ms. Feidler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I completely understand the position of OPZ. We talked at length about this. Since the church reached out, there has been another property owner that has reached out concerned because the properties were purchased, understanding the split, and none of these were initiated by the property owners. These were all staff recommendations. So, I understand wanting to align, but again, these property owners purchased land, understanding the split zone, and didn't ask for these changes. So, I ask for my colleagues' support this evening.
Are there any further questions from my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment number nine to bill twenty-seven dash twenty-four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number nine to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eleven to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Amendment number eleven to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as ninety-nine Truckhouse Road, Severna Park, from a split of R-two residential and OS open space to a split of R-two residential, R-five residential, and OS open space.
Ms. Feidler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion to the previous passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Same comments as before. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a question. Ms. Feidler, are you... Is there some thought that another property owner is going to come back and ask for their... Later?
Yes.
I got you. Okay. This is interesting, when you sound...
Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment number eleven to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number eleven to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number ten to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Amendment number ten to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four. This amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as fourteen sixty-eight Grandview Road and an unaddressed parcel off Cascade Road Arnold from residential low density to a split of residential low density and rural.
Ms. Feidler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the plan in the legislation is to take this odd-shaped parcel and move it to all R-two. But when we started looking into the conservation easements, land records that are not part of this bill and not easily accessible identified a deed restriction for, I believe, the entirety of this area, that there is a conservation agreement. So, this area cannot be developed at any time. My concern with going to all R-two, while it aligns the map and makes the parcel all one consistent zone, is that it will be forgotten. So, my hope is with remaining in the split zone, that this property will be before the council in ten years, and the recommendation will be to move to open space, because that's what it truly should be, and not R-two. Motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to comment on amendment number ten?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. This is another one of these splits, you know, going back to a split in zoning where we were trying to correct. And I was not aware that there actually is some kind of conservation language for this property, so that maybe changes our comments a little bit.
Yeah, so, I believe we discussed this property when we were in our Zoom meeting, either the most recent one or the one prior, and had to go through records. There is, I believe, the Severn River... One of the Severn River groups and another group has a restriction on portions, a large portion of this. I believe Ms. Kenny was reading it at the time, if I remember correctly.
That's right. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I was trying to remember, as well, I believe it was the Scenic Rivers Land Trust.
Yes.
They're usually the entity that holds a lot of the conservation easements, and it was a very large, multiple pieces of property that it covered, but it did, I do recall, that it indicated that there was no building that was allowed on the property. Only the buildings that were there were allowed to remain, which there were none there, and except for, I think, duck blinds and things like that, no other building was allowed on these properties that were encumbered by that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I follow up?
Yes.
So, ideally, if I could reach out to the property owners, I would ask them if they would support moving to all open space. They would say yes, and I put a sign, and then we could move that direction. Unfortunately, the owners of these properties are trusts, and there's no real identifiable person to reach out to. So, that's why I would prefer, knowing that there is not a development potential here, changing it to R-two is not appropriate with that in consideration. I would love to see this be all open space at some point in time, but we just can't do it at this point in time. So, my hope is by retaining the split zone, this will pop up on OPZ's radar again when we do this, and they will recommend open space for all properties, all the parcels.
Ms. Pampa?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I just want to state for the record that I think the meeting where you discussed this property, I was not at the meeting. So, I'm coming in here a little flat-footed.
I apologize. You are correct. I can never remember who's in all the boxes.
So, the property that you want to take back to split-zoned, but it couldn't be developed anyways. It was all R-two.
It could not be. That is correct. But R-two, in my opinion, does not really reflect what the properties are collectively. They cannot be developed.
So, it's R-two with a conservation easement, or a...
Yes. Deeds or agreements?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, it was a conservation easement with a third-party entity. I believe it was the Scenic Rivers Land Trust that requires them to keep it in conservation and not built upon in perpetuity.
So, this is just extra insurance, that it's not going to be developed, in your mind, and messing up the maps?
Not really even in insurance. I think it's more appropriate for it to be all open space, but I don't have that lever to pull with our sign requirements and everything. So, if it's staying... If it remains split, it will pop up on the radar when the next council does compres zoning, and hopefully, the recommendation from OPZ would be all open space, and that reflects what's on the ground.
Got you. Okay. Any further comments on amendment ten to bill twenty-seven dash twenty-four? Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment ten to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number ten to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number twelve to bill twenty-eight dash twenty-four.
Amendment number twelve to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four. This amendment changes the zoning of the properties known as fourteen sixty-eight Grandview Road and an unaddressed parcel off Cascade Road Arnold from R-two residential to a split of R-two residential and RLD residential low density.
Ms. Feidler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Second.
No further comments.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment number twelve to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number twelve to bill twenty-eight, twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eleven to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Amendment number eleven to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four. This amendment removes the Village Center development policy area overlay for the properties known as forty-three twenty, forty-three twenty-six, forty-three thirty, forty-three thirty-four, and forty-three thirty-eight Mountain Road and ninety-five Temple Drive Pasadena, changes the development policy area from neighborhood preservation to peninsula for the same properties, and changes the development policy area from neighborhood preservation to peninsula for the properties known as forty-three forty-two and forty-three forty-six Mountain Road.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Back to the Dina. All right. This cleans up the rest of what we did at the last meeting. So, if you take a look on this map on K-one, exhibit K-one, you will see at the right-hand side of the page, there's a large parcel, and the words Peninsula Development Policy Area are there. And at the bottom of that, you'll see Schmitz Lane noted on the map. That is the thirty-one-point-six acre parcel that is the Pasadena Golf Center, which at our last meeting, if everyone recalls, we changed that back to the existing split zoning of C-two along Mountain Road and then RLD in the back. These other parcels here along Mountain Road are... Their zoning is going to change a little bit. So, I say a little bit because some of the back of the property is going to go to commercial, which is currently not. It's currently RLD. Yeah, it's RLD. Thank you, back there. Ms. Pampa is filling in the blanks for me. But this area doesn't make sense to make a Village Center if you're not coming all the way over and getting the Pasadena Golf Center and then these other pieces. You can see there is a Village Center a bit, which is over there at the right... Or the left-hand side of the page, excuse me. That's the Giant. That's the Lake Shore Plaza area that runs all the way up into what's going to be the new Jacobsville Town Center. So, that whole strip of Mountain Road up there is largely developed and is in commercial use. But what it does on this side of the street, as you can see right here where it says Neighborhood Preservation to Peninsula Development Policy Area and removes the overlay, is that it protects this side of Mountain Road from that sort of development of a Village Center, or, again, as we know, the Peninsula Development Policy Area is more restricted than the Neighborhood Preservation. So, that's what that would do for these parcels. So, effectively, that's what's being done. This is a follow-up to the bill that we did at the last meeting, and I'd ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you. Move the amendment.
Second. Would the administration like to comment on this amendment?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. No, I think Mr. Volkey summed it up very well, and we offer no opposition to the amendment.
But I like a good Village Center. I mean, there's just so much opportunity for ten, fifteen years from now.
There are many others.
Okay.
And there's still one here, just off the map.
Okay. No other comments? Well, I remember all the work you did at the mixed-use at the end. Doesn't matter. We'll talk later. Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment number eleven to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four. It's getting late, everybody. Hang with us.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number eleven to bill twenty-seven, twenty-four has been adopted.
All right. And as far as I know, that's a wrap for tonight on the amendments to bills twenty-seven dash twenty-four as amended and bill twenty-eight, twenty-four as amended, and both will be heard again on June seventeenth, 2024. Okay. Well done.
Which one amendment? District Five. Okay.
We'll see who gets those amendments in first. We're going to move on in this agenda. I don't even know where we are. I'm so sorry.
It's a little tight.
Okay. Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number twenty dash twenty-four.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four. Resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to require that all meetings and legislative sessions of the county council comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act.
This is my resolution? I think we've experienced, and as we grow this legislative branch, we understand the limitations the charter has set upon this council with stricter rules or policy regarding Open Meetings Act. The state of Maryland adopted the Open Meetings Act in nineteen eighty, and other... Our neighboring jurisdictions amended their charters to allow for that executive closed session for certain topics, like personnel, legal advice, things like that. And I would... This charter amendment would allow this council to do the same, and I urge my colleagues' support. Happy to discuss. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to lend my support to this, and I just want to explain why, so that the public at home sort of understands. So, at present, we as a body are precluded from ever meeting, as the seven of us, in any kind of a private setting, because this states that all of our meetings must be open to the public. Whereas, if we make this amendment and we comply with the Open Meetings Act, there are, as the chair mentioned, certain exceptions that allow us to go into closed session. So, we as a body will actually be able to meet without having to do it in a public way. That is a significant change. However, as our county grows, and as we have seen with certain matters that have come in front of us in the past few years, there are sometimes instances where we need to be able to discuss things, but to do so in a public forum would require us to then put out information, which is prohibited and we just can't do. So, as a result, it's a limitation on our ability to function. And there is another amendment that is coming that will deal with committees, and I'm less supportive of that. And so I think this is another avenue for us to continue our work as a body and to do what we need to do in a way where we are still complying with the laws at the state level, but we are advancing to a place where we are able to have these meetings and not necessarily have to put things that can't be done publicly out in the public or just not do them. That's not a solution to not do them. So for that, I wanted to give that full context to the public because I'm sure there may be people who are bothered by that a bit, that we may actually have the option to do meetings in private, provided that we comply with the law. Be clear about that. But I just want to make that point because I think it's important for people to understand what this change does and why we are supporting it. So with that, I look forward to voting on it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on resolution 20-24? I would just add that as a former school board member, our county school board, as many have the option, you read, you vote to go into closed session when there's a necessity to do so, to speak legal advice or to discuss a personnel matter. And I found that practice as a school board member to be very helpful since we can't discuss personnel matters or seek legal advice publicly in order to meet. The way we have to operate now is, can be very inefficient and not necessarily allow us to have a comprehensive conversation where we can enjoy the perspective of all seven members while respecting privacy laws and personnel laws. So that's the reason that prompted this, and I look forward to everybody's support. Seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number 20. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just, it's just, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
She was testing you to see if you were still.
I'm sorry. It's been, okay. Everybody, let's, okay. Let's, it's okay. It's okay. We'll now open the public hearing on resolution 20-24. We have six seats. We have one speaker signed up. It's been a long night.
Can we make a motion to go closed session?
Not yet. Madam Chair, while you pull up that robust list, I will just mention that we had one piece of written testimony that was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website. Thank you. Mr. Svenson. Two minutes.
Kurt Svenson, Arnold Maryland. It's my understanding that the county council, I get, hearing what you've said is very helpful. And there just ought to be a better way of communicating that, so that you don't have to come to a meeting to understand, what are you trying to do here? But it sounds disingenuous. We must comply to the open meetings law because we want to meet in closed session. I mean, be upfront about it. And I think that's what Mr. Enright's going to get at. But I'm going to read from the 1963 charter, reporter's notes. A requirement of this sort, public meetings, always, is found in almost all charters. This is then. This section is intended to be more restrictive than the provisions in the then-state law. I hear what you're saying. This is too much, too, too black and white. But identify what's important to you and allow for that. Don't just go with whatever the state says. What is it you're specifically trying to accomplish? Identify it and do that. Pick one or two from, you know, show respect for the thought here that, you know, because it's not the school board. So I'm going to read this. The, this section further provides, they're saying the state allows for executive sessions, the state law at the time. The board felt that since the county council was a legislative body and had no executive or administrative functions, not the Board of Ed. You're not the Board of Ed. You're the county council.
Okay, Mr. Svenson, your two minutes is now up. Mr. Enright.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, members of the staff. I don't have a problem with this resolution changing the charter to allow for closed meetings. What I have a problem with, though, is the construct, the textual construct of the actual revision. I think eliminating the phrase be open to the public is not going to go over well with the citizenry and the voters. And the problem of just inserting, replacing that with comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act is going to incense a lot of people because they're going to, most of them don't know what it is. I guarantee you, most of the voters and constituency may have never heard of it. So what I would like to see is that phrase left in because, you know, they will all be open to the public. In a matter of fact, in order to close a meeting, you got to open it first, then you close it. So they're all going to be open to the public. And I don't suspect there'll be any allowance of summary closures. In other words, we say tonight, we're going to close the meeting in empty, um, July. Be advised. I don't think that's allowed under the Open Meetings Act. So anyway, I submitted written testimony to show that what I would like to see in the construct of this, and I apologize for the question for not highlighting my change in there, but it's all open and closed meetings is the only change I have in there to the question. So the public is informed that the thing you want to do is be able to close meetings since the real, the reality is that the Maryland State Legislature and the governor signed into law the Maryland Open Meetings Act. So you're going to use that to conduct business in a sense of nature. There are 15 reasons for closing, and, you know, I just picked this one.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I am one of those members of the public who goes, you're going to not have an open meeting? You're going to have a closed meeting? What are you going to do in that closed meeting? You know, you know, what kind of hanky panky is going on? This is not something that I can trust. Excuse me?
We're going to reset the product.
That's, oh, geez. Well, at least come up with the one that's the gateway to Annapolis for me and my surrounding neighbors. But, you know, the issue here is that there is this major desire. I mean, you know. I know you know. There are people who just say, Anarundale County is really corrupt and Maryland is really corrupt. And I came from Illinois, and you know, they send the governors off to jail, you know, periodically. You know, so, you know, these are, you know, heartfelt and from, you know, past experiences. And so what concerns me in the, I mean, I understand, you've got the laws that say, you know, you can't talk about personnel. You can't talk about this, you can't talk about that because it's confidential. So how do you work your way around it? Now personally, I put my faith in Patrick Enright because when Patrick Enright comes up with ideas, he's pretty good at it. Actually, he's better than pretty good. He's actually excellent. So, but, you know, you understand what I'm saying, that I understand what your problem is. And if I'm out here and you're talking about, you know, personnel people or personnel problems, you can't do that. Then you're in trouble, and then who's going to tell on you and get, you know? No, you don't want to do that. You've got to bring this together in some way so that, you know, you can do what you need to do and do it in a way that does the minimum to the destruction of the public, you know, faith in government. Because I don't have to tell you what the, what the polls are saying.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think you did. Thank you. The public hearing on resolution 20-24 is now closed. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hear the concerns. I would like to see this resolution pass, but I would also like the voters to pass it. So just reading my colleagues, if there's interest in expanding the language so that it's very clear that we still have open to the public meetings.
So I wanted to ask our legislative council, and this is the resolution to put a charter amendment on the ballot. So what, this, all of this isn't going to be on the ballot. So do we have a sense, is it? It's just the question. The Anarundale County Council will require that all meetings and legislative sessions of the county council will comply with the Open Meetings Act. That's what it's going to say. It's not going to show all this other parts of section 307. So I'm not, I'm certainly open to amending the language, but I think if we start to go down a path, we're, I mean, in saying we're going to comply with the Open Meetings Act, to me, the only concern is that if that's what the question is to the voter, are they going to say, is the concern is, or do they not currently comply with the Open Meetings Act? So, but there's, you know, it'll get confusing. But Mr. Smith, I'm not sure who was first.
No, I was just going to throw my sentiment behind the resolution as well, that there are times, and we've seen that over the last few years, just in general, and certainly in 2012, when we had meetings, or we didn't have meetings actually, where this would have certainly come in handy with some of the personnel issues. So, I mean, I don't know what the best language to use for that question is, but I am 100% on board with being able to close session to discuss personnel issues because I think it would be healthy for this body to be able to do that. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on, to answer Ms. Fiedler's question, taking a poll, based on the way you described the question being on the ballot, I think I feel comfortable moving forward tonight. I agree with Ms. Fiedler. I want to pass this. I also want the voters to be comfortable supporting it. But I think the way you, if that's how it's going to sound, I'm quite comfortable with that.
Mr. Volkey.
I kind of, I want to do the thing I said not to do earlier, bring Mr. Enright up and talk to him about this. But, yeah, I'm fine with this, right? I'm totally fine with what we want to do and the idea behind this resolution. But I do, I agree with you. I think it is interesting. Is a voter going to look at this and say, well, have they not been complying with the Open Meetings Act up to this point? Like, what are they doing? So I just wonder if we need to say something that says all meetings, you know, public and closed or something. I don't know. But I'm just thinking out loud on that.
It's a slippery slope to, because we're not going to put in the code language with the brackets and what we're taking out and what we're putting in. So I'm not sure if there's a better way to state it other than the, the way different legal women voters or whoever, or the voter guide sort of discuss it. Because this is the cleanest way to.
Sure.
To, and the Office of Law, and, I mean, we've had folks engages. It's not like I drafted it, so. I'm not married to these words, but I feel like if we, I don't know how to move, it gets a little messy with, you're asking one question. We're not providing all the, removing this language or adding that language. We're going to, the county council will be complying with the Open Meetings Act, the state law, so.
Do you think the voter guide that goes out that possibly explains this says something to the effect of the council will now be able to go from public meetings to private meetings or closed meetings without any explanation for why? Like, is that the concern? I hear that concern, I think, from some of the folks who testified because if, we know why we're doing it and we understand the context, and the people who testified understand the context, but if somebody reads this and they just immediately go, hmm, well, they're going to not do public meetings? Well, why would they do that?
But that's not what it's going to say.
No, I understand, but there's going to be explanation. Voter guides are going to come out. I mean, I don't want to say which groups, but you mentioned one of them. Like, people are going to explain this in their own words, and they're going to put context around this in their own words. If we define it here the way we want it, maybe that limits how they're going to try to spin it if they don't like it. I don't know.
Ms. Beach, do you have?
No, I was just going to correct something that Mr. Volkey said, that I believe you said that you could go into a closed meeting without explanation. And I think you were talking about without explanation of the context of going into a closed meeting rather than, you have to, you have to provide a reason to go into a closed meeting publicly. But that's, I think you were referring to something else.
I agree with you.
I got lights everywhere. Ms. Hummer?
So, again, I'm going to echo what Ms. Pickard said from days on the school board, where we were very strict about open meetings, and we read a disclosure statement before every meeting, before we go into closed session, stating the reason that we're going in, whether it's legal or personnel or something. So it's very public as to why we're going into closed session and not having a, having a meeting and to have that. If this whole resolution were on the ballot for people, I think it would be confusing because we have the brackets that says be open to the public and be confusing. But I think that just this and its language, I think, says it very clearly. And if people, I think adding more would actually be more confusing because we are saying we're going to comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. And open meetings says that they are open, and, you know, even our closed sessions are open in this fact that we publicly state why they're going to be closed. And so that's very.
And vote.
And transparent to people if we have to go into that. So I'm okay with this language.
Ms. Radveen.
Oh. I was going to suggest maybe some, like, a very simple phrase such as including the exceptions for closed session as outlined in the Open Meetings Act, in the Maryland Open Meeting Act, without having to, so if somebody wants to say, oh, what are the reasons they can go into closed session? They, the reference is right there. And we could even give the number because it's like 15, right? Or 15.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a whole certain number, and you have to check off and read which ones you comply with.
Ms. Fiedler. Mr. Smith.
Couple things. I remember when we passed the storm remediation fee, we actually put a clause on the bills that went out to all of the residents signifying what was the impetus behind us passing that bill. Just throwing that note out there. The second thing is, could there be a, you know, you pass, if this bill, if this resolution passes, some council sort of, I don't know, resolution, but some sort of council statement that explains, you know, why we were trying to create this, that we all agree on the language on, and once that's cemented here over the next month or two, we can put that out through our own social media, it's the same verbiage, so that, so that we're all speaking from the same talking points, if you will. I hate to say that, but just an idea, just throw that out there. That's all.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I started with the question, having this discussion, I am comfortable with the way that the resolution is.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Just one comment. I think Mr. Smith's idea has some merit, you know, to, for us to, we have ways to communicate with our constituents. I think we should work together and utilize those to make, to make sure that we can be clear.
The county executive has a whole team upstairs that whenever he's trying to pass a bill, he puts together nice, pretty charts, it goes out. We should do something similar to this resolution.
If only we had a communications person.
I just want to note a few things. So prior to the election, for many weeks, we have to advertise anything that is going to be on the ballot. So context could be put there. We can also put on our webpage and create a special page with all the information. For the certification, the letters certifying the ballot questions, it won't give detail as to what is actually in the context of the resolution, but it does say, for example, the following proposed charter amendment was adopted by resolution number blank at the county council meeting, at its, of the county council, at its meeting on whatever the date is, as required by the Maryland Constitution. So people can reference it if they would like to.
Okay. Wow. I like, I like the ideas of keeping the language as it is and working as, when we, when we are done, this body is done voting on charter resolutions for charter amendments, we can create a package on the website.
Go into closed session.
Yeah. But there is, I mean, if you're not familiar, you actually vote and make a statement as to why, and you check however many of the 15 topics that are allowed within the Open Meetings Act. You vote, you say which ones you're going to talk about, and you go into closed session. It's very public. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number 2024.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 2024 has passed. Been adopted. Words.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 21-24.
Resolution number 2124. Resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anarundale County to provide for the position and duties of the legislative council to the county council.
Thank you. This is also, I am the sponsor of this, this is pretty straightforward. We have come to rely on our legislative council, and I felt it was important to elevate that role into the charter. Happy to discuss. Great. Madam Secretary. Oh, we have to open the public hearing. We will now open the public hearing on resolution 21-24.
Svenson.
Madam Secretary, did, Madam Secretary, did we, did we have any online testimony? No, Madam Chair, we did not. Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. If there's anyone, we have no one signed up, but we have Mr. Svenson here. You have two minutes.
Yes, I won't even take the two minutes. But I do recall the League of Women Voters testifying at one of my first public meetings as a retiree, which was, I decided to spend my time with Mr. Enright watching the Charter Revision Commission meetings. Yeah, I'm boring. But, and I recall that person saying that you shouldn't put anything in the charter, that, that that reason. that reason is not to put things in the charter, to elevate things, you know, to... If you can do it through the law, do it through the law. The charter is about... Not about saying, I think this is really important. It's about, you know, control, restrictions, governance, not about, well, I want to recognize this as being elevated. That's all.
Any further comments regarding Resolution 21-24? Mr. Volkey?
Hi. Oh. So I guess my question would be this, because I hear what Mr. Svensson's saying. What's the thought process with putting this in the charter? I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. I'm just curious. Just is the idea, do we want to make sure it doesn't go away? Are we afraid this is somehow going to be abolished? Do we think this is going to give more legislative oomph to what the legislative council does? Does this make them able to stand up to the county attorney on behalf of the county council? Anything?
All of the above. I don't know. Julie, Ms. Hummer, did... Ms. Beaches, you want to have any? Did you... No, you're good.
Just like, I'm not excited.
Ms. Hummer?
I would say, currently in the charter, we have our other two appointed positions are in the charter. And I think with time, we've come to depend on the legislative council to do all the things you just stated and to ensure that it's in there and that it's seen as a permanent and vital part of the legislative branch and how we can carry on our business to best govern. That's my thought on it.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So I think I'm sort of on the fence about this one. I like the idea... I certainly like the idea of, you know, elevating it to the charter. At the same time, I want to... Would want to be very careful that we're not locking ourselves into a certain list of things that we would want our legislative council to be able to do. Because if we wanted them to be able to do something not on the list, we could open ourselves to a challenge to saying, your council can't do that. So I almost think this is, and maybe Mr. Svensson inspired this, but the less is more, to maybe make it just a more simple statement, the council shall have a legislative council. And then we get to decide what the legislative council gets to do.
Well, there is... There are some... The county attorney might take umbrage with that. Mr. Volkey?
I just tack on to what Ms. Rodvian was saying. So in the event that, say, we expand the legal department for the county council and we move beyond simply having the legislative council to now the legislative council and a deputy legislative council or an assistant or something like that, and we kind of grow that branch, does this in some way impede that growth where this is, you know, you have a legislative council, that's all you have? I just wonder about that piece of it.
Well, I think, like, we have a county auditor and Madam Auditor has, you know, multiple staff. I don't think we have to have every staff member in the charter. I'm not going to die on this hill, but, you know. Well, I presented it, so yes, I do. But if you're... I'm not going to be mad at you if you don't vote for it. Is it... Ms. Fiedler?
Going back to the previous question on the previous resolution, I think if there is interest in having this in the charter, perhaps we should adjust it to limit it to the one sentence ending with assist members of the county council, period, and then get rid of all the very specified tasks. If we wanted to pursue having this in the charter, I could go either way. Ms. Rodvian had a great point.
I like the parliamentarian part.
Part of that is assisting, I would think, county council.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I just wanted to say, I think I'm landing in a place where Ms. Rodvian brought up a good point. I like Ms. Fiedler's suggestion of where to put the period.
Mr. Smith?
Actually, I agree with Ms. Rodvian, that with the less is more.
Why don't we... Why don't I make a motion to hold this resolution?
This is what happens when we don't have a work session.
This is what happens when we don't have a work session. I make a motion to hold Resolution 21-24 until the June 17, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Madam Secretary, Ms. Ledbetter, I think. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold Resolution 21-24.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Resolution 2124 till June 17 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Resolution 22-24.
Resolution Number 2224, Resolution Proposing An Amendment To The Charter Of Anarundel County To Allow The County Council To Create And Appoint Standing Committees To Require Meetings Of Standing Committees To Comply With Maryland Open Meetings Act And To Require Votes Of The Council And Any Standing Committees To Be Recorded In The County Council Journal.
Thank you. This is also my charter amendment. So this amendment, as, you know, it's clear, this council is part-time. And with that, it is challenging at times to... For all of us to keep up with the amount of work. And creating standing committees is something we have seen in other jurisdictions across... In our neighboring jurisdictions, it does change the nature of the way this body would work in Anarundel County. I've heard from some of you, I understand some of the concerns. It is probably a little premature as to where we are right now, but as it's... I was drafting, it is something I would like to see this council move towards in the coming years in order for us to be a more impactful and effective deliberative body. But I'm happy for the discussion. Ms. Rodvian? Mr. Smith?
I think I was like the last one, so they should go...
Oh, sorry, Mr. Smith.
I was... A couple of things. I think if our staff was larger, I would probably be 100% on board with... This is just my own personal... But I'm not going to down this hill either, so it's... But, you know, it's already complicated with just the seven of us. We're involved in everything. And so having a small committee and then that small committee sort of influencing those options that comes out of that, sort of by the time it comes to the larger committee, how is this different from the... So there is a clause or language in our charter now, or at least in our rules, that says we can fact-finding and... What's the other word?
Inquiry.
Inquiries. How was that component, which we're allowed to do now, different from this... Obviously, this would be standing, so it would be recurring, but...
Well, in other jurisdictions, standing committees are... They create the budget committee or the personnel committee or... And those three council members tackle issues before the body, maybe before they get to the body of the whole. They would be created and meet on a regular basis. It's starting to move towards looking at pre-filing and there's all kinds of things that would move this council to be more professional and more sophisticated in our actions.
Yeah, I think if... I felt like if they were more full-time, I would probably be closer to that stage.
I think that's what your colleague next to you is going to say.
Oh, is it? Oh. But, I mean, I'm willing, whatever, you know, I can be flexible. I'm just trying to understand what the... What is the end state? Like, what is your vision for us in 10 years? How many committees would there be and will our duties include these additional responsibilities? So I'm just trying to factor in and understand all of that. That's all.
Well, this charter amendment is drafted to the point which would just give us the... Which would just allow us to create the concept. It would... We wouldn't have to. And but we would be... It would be, you know, taking a proactive look at where we want to take this council. And then when we're ready, maybe to become a full-time council, like some of our jurisdictions. I know I do this job full-time and it's still not enough time with one staff person. So to feel like when I come before this body, I am prepared on every single bill, right? So it's a lot of work. I don't think the public fully understands how much work it is to be responsive to our constituents and understand the role of this legislative body. But anyways, Mr. Volkey, we'll just go down the list. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. So you're right. I was going to make a note about the full-time council. But I also wanted to throw some respect to something that I don't know whether we're going to hear testimony on this or not, but I believe that the framers of the charter actually considered this question about whether there should be standing committees. And they came to the conclusion that, no, we should meet as a full body. That should be how we do business. And I would personally be disappointed if I didn't get to meet with all of you and hear all of your perspectives on everything. So...
Yeah.
But in seriousness, I just... I think it is premature. I think we're not a full-time council. I think that breaking it up would be, to me, detrimental to my ability to feel like I had a full understanding on all the legislation that's in front of us. I do appreciate the work sessions when I'm able to attend them, where we get some information and we are able to ask questions and sort of hear each other's perspective. So I just... I'm not sure we're ready for this yet, but I appreciate the intent.
No, Ms. Fiedler, I'm going to go right down the road. Ms. Fiedler?
Oh, I didn't realize I hit it, but I do have a comment. I tend to agree. I understand the intent behind it, but when you work so closely with the constituents that you represent, I mean, we are as close to our constituents as it gets for any elected office. I like to know how the watch was made. So to not be involved in certain conversations would make me very uneasy coming to this body and voting on important matters. So I appreciate it, but I do agree that, for me, it's... We're not there yet.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. I think at this point, I'm probably going to be reiterating things my colleagues have already said, but I will add, one is I know the city council actually has standing committees and I'm not really sure... I'm not really sure that especially... I mean, they are also a part-time body and their, you know, pay is even far less than ours are. So most of the folks either are working full-time or, you know, earning a pension. You have to stay to the very end, everybody, to hear all the good stuff. So I just really... I am concerned about the time commitment. If we were... If we were also putting forward a charter amendment to make this council full-time, I would be much more apt to do it. But I also agree with Mr. Volkey that I really do... It happens multiple times a meeting, that I really actually appreciate that we are able to have... That we are able to have conversations with the whole group. And I'll also say, one... Just one last little point, just of an experience that I've had from being part of the Critical Area Commission, is that we have subcommittees and then we have our whole committee. And a lot of times, they're... They end up being very repetitive. So we talk about the exact same things with our subcommittee and then we end up talking about almost the exact same things in our whole committee. And we're actually, as a commission, we're working on ways to try and, you know, make those subcommittees more productive instead of just, you know, reiterating and repeating what happens in the whole committee. So I think I'd be more apt to do it if we were full-time, which I also would absolutely advocate for. I always feel like I'm stretched too thin, you know, to be able to do all the things that I would like to do. And I think our constituents notice when, you know, when we talk about things like, you know, being able to have very full and robust discussions on things like charter amendments or amendments and things like that, that if we were a full-time body... And I know I'm going off on a tangent here, but I'm... It's... I have the opportunity, so I'm doing it. I really think it's time that we consider that, but we should consider that first. Lastly, I do appreciate that this is not mandatory, but basically, a supermajority vote could end up dragging two unwilling council members into a time commitment that they maybe weren't prepared for, because I do think it would add significantly to the workload to be meeting in subcommittees. And I will leave it at that.
Ms. Ledbetter?
All of my thunder has been stolen. So concur with points Ms. Rodvian just made as far as the time commitments, concur with Ms. Fiedler about... And Mr. Volkey. I have learned... This is my first term. I have learned a tremendous amount since, you know, being elected and taking office. And the vast majority of that learning has taken place when we are meeting as a body as a whole, to be honest. And I'm learning from my colleagues and from your constituents. And I would... The idea that that might happen less if we have standing committees makes me uncomfortable. There's just been such tremendous value to us being together as a body. And the last thing I'm going to say is, just a reminder that we still need to have the public hearing on this.
Yes. I won't forget the public hearing. But seeing it doesn't sound like this resolution has even close to a supermajority. So while we are forced... We will have to have a public hearing, I'll probably just withdraw it. Yeah, I don't want a... I don't want a failed bill. I haven't ever had a failed bill, so... With that...
It's not that bad.
We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 22-24. Did we have anybody sign... Did we have anybody bring in written testimony? Madam Secretary?
Yes, we actually had one piece of written testimony that was submitted, shared with the council, added to the record and posted on the website.
Thank you. We had one person sign up, Mr. Svensson. And anyone else in the audience that wants to come forward, now's your chance.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. I think the only thing I really have to add to this, and I try to bring it to the meetings, is the citizen perspective. And my sense is that this disenfranchises citizens to the extent that, as a citizen, I expect my representative to maybe have a better sense of it all as opposed to getting the filters from others, you know? And the budget committee or the personnel committee or whatever you might have them be, you know? And that's the... I guess that is the other comment, is that this is way too just... We just want to reinvent it and let us do it. You know what I mean? Yada. I think there needs to be specificity about how this stuff works and what you're going to have and what functions and duty. There just needs to be so much more. It's a major alteration of the representative nature of this body to have a subgroup that's going to become the experts. And then I get it through Amanda. That's my sense.
Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 22-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 22-24.
Resolution Number 2224, Resolution Proposing An Amendment To The Charter Of Anarundel County To Allow The County Council To Create And Appoint Standing Committees To Require Meetings Of Standing Committees To Comply With The Maryland Open Meetings Act And To Require Votes Of The Council And Any Standing Committees To Be Recorded In The County Council Journal.
Hearing of the conversation tonight, Madam Secretary, I would like to withdraw Resolution 22-24.
Noted. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 23-24.
Resolution Number 2324, Resolution Proposing An Amendment To The Charter Of Anarundel County To Allow A Member Of The County Board Of Appeals To Serve Up To Three Consecutive Terms.
Thank you. This is also my charter resolution. This was brought to me by our Chair of the Board of Appeals. After we have changed our terms to three terms, this would allow a council member who... To have their appointee to the Board of Appeals remain for the duration of their term, if they so choose. It was... It's pretty straightforward. Happy to discuss. Ms. Ledbetter?
I might... I might be the sole person who feels this way, but just... I might, I might be the sole person who feels this way, but just for the matter of record, I am not sure, as I mentioned before, my first term, I was not on the council. For the last time, I am not sure how I would have voted on the charter amendment that gave the option of a third term for a council person. And so with that being said, personally, for me, I feel like Board of Appeals, they're unelected positions that have a tremendous amount of say and power over what takes place in our county. The idea of facilitating the possibility of 12 straight years, it's just not someplace. I understand where this is coming from, I'm not necessarily critical of it, I'm just, it's a hard thing for me to wrap myself around, and I just wanted to go on the record explaining where my vote is probably going to land tonight.
Sure.
So there's no misunderstandings.
Sure. Is there any further discussion before we open the public hearing on Resolution 23-24? Mr. Volkey.
Well, having been one of the people who did vote for three terms, I will just say this, I understand the concern, right? I really do. But I also recognize that it takes time for you to even become versed, for anyone to become versed in what is happening up here, right? And in how this county works. With a $2.3 billion budget, with 4,300-plus employees, with, you know, topics from everything ranging from trash pickup to land use to budgetary policy, and everything in between, to dangerous animals, you know, and all those different things. There's a lot of things that we have to cover, there's a whole gamut. So I say that because being someone who generally is in favor of, you know, not having people be in politics forever, and term limits, and move up or move out, that kind of thing, that military sense, I also think there's a certain amount of institutional knowledge that you gain from being in the body that allows you to be more effective for your constituents, as long as you're still representative of the constituents who put you here, and as long as you're still responsive to their interests, which they tell us every four years at the ballot box, I think that that is a reason to suggest that maybe we are even more valuable the longer that we're on this body, not forever, but for a longer term. And I think the same is true for Board of Appeals. So that was a lot of the thinking behind three terms for the council, and I would just suggest that same thought process for Board of Appeals, because they do get some very, very complex land use issues that come in front of them. And quite frankly, once they've earned all that knowledge through, you know, years and hard work, et cetera, you kind of look at it and go, isn't it a waste to kick them off, aren't they actually helping citizens? And we, as a body, are the ones who appoint them, so if for some reason we felt like they were no longer being representative to the constituents of our area, we'd replace them, you know, that's up to us, that's one of the things that the voters give us, the ability, and the charter gives us the ability to do. So those are my reasons for it, I think it does make sense to extend the terms to allow us to have that opportunity. I just figured I'd offer that context, having been in this seat when we voted on the last piece of that, that you were talking about.
Ms. Rodvian.
This is maybe a question for anyone who would like to answer it, but it is a little challenging to recruit for the Board of Appeals, yes? And I'm thinking that was part of the motivation here, too, yeah? Because the pay is just not, I mean, it's...
It's a theme tonight.
Yeah.
No, you are correct.
Yeah. So I think that probably, even though I think I definitely agree with the idea, like, you want to have, you know, new blood and new ideas at the same time, we also need to make sure that the seats are filled, and there is something to be said for the experience that you gain. So I think, I think that recruitment piece, that seems to be a theme tonight, too.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I mean, I just want to add that, you know, the Board of Appeals is an extremely time-consuming position. They put in an amazing number of hours for very little pay, and it's hard to recruit for because of the time commitments involved. But also, there is a bit of checks and balance in it, because we, as council members, are the ones who nominate the people for our districts, and so if we feel somebody has lost their edge, we don't have to nominate them for a third term. So we have that, they don't have to accept it, and we don't have to nominate them. So there is something that goes along with that when we look at performance or willingness to do it, but, you know, I like giving at least the choice, the option to have that.
We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 23-24. Madam Secretary, did we get any testimony with the online testimony tool? No, Madam Chair, we did not. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to...
To make a couple of comments.
You have two minutes, Ms. Johnson.
Well, basically, it comes down to, I don't, my understanding of the people working on the Board of Appeals are not attorneys, they're not trained as attorneys, I believe. And that means that their task is doubly difficult. And as a person who's been before the Board of Appeals, either as a witness, or a party, or whatever, I have concerns about the accuracy and, you know, some of the other issues that go along. And so I would really think, I respect your comments about, you know, the low wages and, you know, the time demands. And I'm thinking, one of my former students, Billy Molden, was just dynamite on the Board of Appeals. I mean, put him in for 25 years, and I'll say, do that, he's a good guy. On the other hand, I have concerns about the guys, or the people who really have no background, you know, no understanding, and no experience, but they want the opportunity to have the experience. And they can be good people and decent people, but they're just, it's more than they can handle, along with home and other job, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I understand your point of view, and it certainly makes good sense, but I wouldn't be me if I didn't say to you, but there is that citizen point of view that raises the question of, you're putting people on for 12 years, and they, you know, they have no training? You know, how did you come to that conclusion? And, you know, if you had the opportunity to look for someone who did make it through, you know, say, a paralegal program, or took some paralegal courses to have a better understanding of the finding of the facts, and then really looking at the law. Oh, I'll give you an example. Yeah, I will give you an example. Megachurch. Is a megachurch a real legal term? And I can tell you, after several days of searching, the answer is no.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
However, you can get some information from liturgical...
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The public hearing on Resolution 23-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 23-24. Resolution number 23-24, Resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to allow a member of the county Board of Appeals to serve up to three consecutive terms. Is there any further discussion at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 23-24. Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Resolution 23-24 has been adopted. Okay, well done, everybody. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, June 10, 2024, at 9:00 a.m., when we will meet in the council chambers for amendments to the FY 25 proposed budget. Please check the county website for important information and updates on our meetings. Thank you, and have a good night, be safe.